Alrighty. Everyone hear me alright? Good evening, tonight is Monday, October 25th and I'm calling this meeting to order. I want to mention that Dr. Moore is not here tonight due to medical reasons and expect to have her back at our November meeting. Ms. Stevens will be arriving a little bit late tonight. Orange County Schools Board of Education pledges to our families, students, staff, and the greater community to conduct our business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The Board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per Board policy, Robert's Rules of Order will be used to conduct meetings and a moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held after the Board adopts tonight's agenda. As we begin our work this evening, I ask that we remember that Orange County Schools was founded on land previously settled by ancestors of the Okanichi Band of the Suppani Nation, and reflect on building authentic community who works honestly and transparently to repair generations of harm between our district and our Indigenous community. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. With that, I will pass it to Dr. Felder for our recognitions. Dr. Felder?
Dr. Felder, you're muted on both of your login instances?
Bear with us for one moment while we get the superintendent's audio working.
We have some technical difficulties, Dr. Felder's on speakerphone here, so she's gonna talk through my microphone.
Fantastic, thank you. Oh, can't hear you, Dr. Felder?
Hi, Mrs. Mackenzie, can you hear me?
A little bit, but it's kinda compromised. I think so. I hope that it works for folks.
Okay, I'm so sorry for these technical difficulties here.
Now, if you went out, you're fading out. Yeah, it's fading out.
Should we just take a five-minute recess so Dr. Felder can fix her audio? Mr. Abely?
Yeah, that'd be great if we could do just five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, we'll carry on in five minutes.
Okay, I'm back. Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Alright. So I assume it's time for recognitions? Alright, so I will jump right in. A good evening, Mrs. Mackenzie, Chair Mackenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, to the entire Board, to our students, staff, and families. Tonight, we have a number of recognitions. First recognition for tonight, we want to recognize October as Fire Safety Month. So this is the month where children, adults, and teachers learn how to stay safe in case of a fire. Firefighters provide life-saving public education in an effort to drastically decrease casualties caused by fires. This year's Fire Safety Month campaign is "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety." The goal is to educate everyone on how to detect the sounds that smoke and carbon monoxide alarms make. Knowing what to do when an alarm sounds will keep everyone safe. So when an alarm makes noises, a beeping sound or a chirping sound, we must take action. We want to thank the Orange Rural Fire Department and Office of the Fire Marshal, who helped students at Pathways Elementary School to learn about fire safety and prevention. Thank you very much. Next slide, please. Mission critical moment. So, as you all know, high literacy rates have been found to correlate to everything from better access to economic opportunity, to better nutrition, to environmental sustainability. Literacy, as defined in Orange County Schools, is the ability to read, to write, to listen, speak, and think critically. Literacy is a civil right and the cornerstone of development. Increasing literacy achievement in Orange County Schools is part of Goal One of our new strategic plan, which is preparing every learner, each and every learner, for a life of service and success. Students will need to be fully literate to achieve that goal. Hence, a heavy emphasis and focus on increasing literacy achievement is one of the district's critical missions. And we have to start early. So, to that end, the district has implemented a phonemic awareness program called HEGERTY in pre-K and grades one and two. Based on preliminary feedback from the district's literacy audit, which is drawing to a close, and you'll all get updated on that soon, pre-K and grades one and two, teachers throughout the district are implementing the program with fidelity. We applaud them for their efforts at doing so. And so now, here's Mrs. Amber Wilson, the Executive Director of Literacy, to tell us more about what phonemic awareness is and how it's being implemented in the district. Mrs. Wilson?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you. As Dr. Felder said, we are in our first year of implementation of HEGERTY in our pre-K through second-grade classrooms. HEGERTY provides explicit and systematic phonological and phonemic awareness instruction.
You're muted?
No, I can hear her.
I can't hear.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So phonemic awareness is our student's ability to hear, to notice, think about, and work with the individual sounds, also called phonemes, in spoken words. This includes things like rhyming, blending, stretching, or changing words. But phonemic awareness is all auditory and does not involve words in print. So during phonemic awareness lessons, students are able to explore the sounds and how they contribute to the formation of words. And this is essential when students are learning to read and helps our readers understand that letters and words are systematically represented by sounds. And Dr. Felder shared that recently, when our TNTP auditors were in our buildings, one of the auditors shared with me that if he did not know that this was our first year in implementation, they would not have assumed that, as our teachers are implementing with fidelity. And to put it in his words, he can see that Orange County Schools is doubling down on foundational literacy skills and expects for us to receive, to see a return on that investment as early as this year in our students' learning and then in their data as well. So we're excited about that and we appreciate all the support as we really do zoom in and focus on literacy with urgency. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Just checking in, can everyone hear me?
Yes. Oh, now we can't hear you. We could hear you before, Dr. Felder.
She's muted.
Attention, tonight I am so honored to present someone who is the epitome of an effective principal. The Orange County Schools Principal of the Year, join role, please, is Mr. Tony Witter, Principal at River Park Elementary School. Mr. Witter has been described by many staff and families as an excellent leader, someone who genuinely cares about staff, students, and the community. He's calm and positive, someone who puts students first, extremely collaborative and active listener, someone who makes you feel welcome, very supportive of teachers, staff, students, and parents, someone who looks at things and takes action from an equity lens, very instructional-focused, a relationship builder, someone who knows all, not some, all River Park students by name, and someone who loves to learn and dig into the research, which is why he isn't here with us tonight. He currently started a doctoral program and could not get excused from class. So I guess that makes Mr. Witter a good student, too. I am so honored to bestow this honor upon someone so very deserving, Mr. Tony Witter. Mr. Witter will go on to be considered as North Carolina's Principal of the Year. So congratulations to Mr. Witter for being named Orange County Schools Principal of the Year. Alright. Okay, more recognitions to come. Next slide, please. We also want to recognize Mrs. Mariah Morris, Orange County Schools K-5 Literacy Facilitator, and she's also North Carolina's 2019-2020 Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Morris, a new member to the Orange County Schools team, and she's already making a positive difference for staff and students, had the opportunity last week to represent North Carolina Educators in Washington, DC as State Teacher of the Year with the Council of Chief State School Officials. She used this opportunity to advocate for a number of things, including universal pre-K, wraparound services to support students, literacy support for our youngest learners, innovative recruitment programs, increasing funding to support reading interventionists and TAs, as well as federal testing flexibility. Mrs. Morris also had the opportunity to tour the National Museum of American History exhibit entitled "Girlhood: It's Complicated", which is a reminder of the space that our girls operate and live in as they enter our schools and classrooms. We are so proud of all the work that Mrs. Morris is doing here in Orange County Schools, but also her advocacy in North Carolina and at the national level. We are so fortunate to have her on our literacy team. Okay, and so rounding third. So last but not least, recognition for tonight is the 22nd Annual Lights on After School, which is actually recognized on Thursday, October 28th. So launched in 2000, Lights on After School is the only nationwide event celebrating after-school programs and their important role in the lives of children, families, and communities. The effort has become the hallmark of the after-school movement. This annual event sends a powerful message that millions more kids need quality after-school programs and is so important in our district that our mayor, our very own mayor, Mrs. Weaver, wrote a proclamation and recognition of the importance of after-school programs in our community. Thank you, Mayor Weaver. And now, here to share the mayor's proclamation is Ms. Tamara Mathis, our new Director of After-School Programs. We are thrilled to have Ms. Mathis on the Orange County Schools team. She, too, has hit the ground running and is already making a noticeable difference in the district. Mrs. Mathis?
Thank you, Dr. Felder, School Board members, President, Vice President. I'm glad to be here in Orange County. I will not belabor you long. I would like to read the proclamation that we did receive last week from our mayor, Mayor Weaver. Proclamation on Lights on After School Day, October 28, 2021. Whereas the town of Hillsborough fully recognizes the value of quality after-school programs and opportunities, and whereas after-school programs provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills, and whereas after-school programs support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends, and whereas after-school programs build stronger communities by involving students, parents, community leaders, and volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, after-school programs have supported youth through innovative virtual and in-person programming to keep children engaged, care for children of essential workers, providing meals, academic support, and checking in on the health and well-being of the children and their families. And whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing funding problems and need continued support. And whereas the Orange County Schools after-school programs have provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas Lights on After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 28, 2021, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs. Now, therefore, I, Jen Weaver, Mayor of the Town of Hillsborough, do hereby recognize October 28, 2021 as Lights on After School Day in the Town of Hillsborough, and I call this observation to the attention of all our residents. In witness whereof, I hereby, too, set my hand and cause this seal of the Town of Hillsborough to be affixed this 22nd day of October in the year 2021. Signed, Jen Weaver, Mayor of Town of Hillsborough. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis. We're so glad to have you in OCS, and thank you also to Mayor Weaver for that proclamation. Dr. Felder, I don't think we can hear you. Well, I believe that that ends our recognitions. So with that, I will ask if we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda with an added action item to the health and safety updates around mask requirements. For those listening, it's about loosening them, not tightening them, just so we all know. So moved.
Second.
The motion from Ms. Doyle, and a second from Mr. Atherton. Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore and Ms. Stevens are not here yet. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Our agenda has been adopted. Thank you, everyone. Now, the opportunity for Board comments. Mr. Atherton, do you have any comments this evening?
Yeah, just real quick. I just first wanted to congratulate both our high school volleyball teams for making it to the second round of state playoffs, which hasn't happened since 2015. And also, we're going to be hosting the state playoffs at Cedar Ridge, which hasn't happened in nine years. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. It's fantastic to hear our teams doing so well, especially given the environment we're in. Also wanted to share, I've really enjoyed helping out in the morning with some of the car rider lines, seeing all the kids come out, all the excitement, teachers, and the music, too, that they play when everybody's coming in. It's just fantastic. The only other thing I wanted to highlight is, you know, I'd like to just, us to consider when we're thinking about the climate action grant, that we think about using that possibly for reusable water bottles. I know a lot of schools right now, they don't have reusable waters to give all the students, and so they're getting just the one-time-use water bottles, and I think that would be a great usage of the money and use our refill stations in our school. That's all for me. Thank you.
Love that idea. Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Though I hope that we will mark it with something permanent so that they're not all confusing them and spreading germs.
Yes.
If they're identical. Ms. Hauser?
Yes, I just wanted to share that I am actually a volunteer on the car rider lines every week at Eflin and Gravely Hill. It has been incredibly rewarding, it's been incredibly rewarding to me because I get to see the genuine joy that is shared amongst our teachers, staff, and families. It reminds me of why I'm here and how important our schools are to building a safe and engaged community. Thank you so much, our teachers, staff, and families for showing up every day. Thank you.
Doyle?
Thanks, Chair Mackenzie. I just wanted to say I'm feeling really confident in the teams and plans that we have in place. I really appreciated Dr. Felder's team and her leadership with the OCS strategic plan at our last meeting, and Dr. Keeling and her team with our Equity Plan and the real marriage of those plans. And I enjoyed listening in advance for the school improvement plans that we have tonight. And one of my favorite quotes is that "We are going to be brave, not perfect." So I know this has been a really challenging time, and we've got our COVID protocols under control. We've been addressing things like hate speeches, they've come up, and we're digging in to tackle learning loss. And I just want to thank all our school and district leaders for their bravery during this challenging time.
Thank you so much. Ms. Smiley?
Yes, a couple of things to report. I attended the October meeting of the Orange County Climate Council, and the commissioners recently decided to take a look at the charge and the purpose of that group and consider whether it needs to change. It's actually different than the other advisory boards, and so they're considering, should it be an official advisory board or something like that? So the commissioners working on that are Commissioners Bedford, Richards, and Fowler. And so I know they welcome folks' thoughts, if anyone have any thoughts about the future direction of that group. And then I spent some time last week at each of the middle schools, which was great. I met a number of new teachers, and teachers who aren't new teachers but are new to Orange County Schools. And the folks coming from other districts had really positive things to say about the support that they're feeling in their schools and from Orange County. And so that was great to hear. And so I just want to thank all of our staff who are working so, so hard, and on top of it, also making their new colleagues feel really welcomed and supported. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Smiley. I also just want to thank our staff members and families. We are wrapping up a very busy, stressful quarter and continue to be so grateful for everyone's efforts. I know that a lot of parent-teacher conferences are happening right now, especially at the elementary level. So just huge thank yous to everyone. We'll keep it brief tonight. And with that, now is the time for public comments. After each speaker has been recognized and unmuted, they will have three minutes to speak. The Board will not have a discussion with any speaker. No profane or vulgar language will be permitted, or personal abuse against any person. Any speaker that uses threatening language will not be permitted to continue. Public comments should not address any specific confidential student or personnel matter. Complaints concerning any specific employee or students are not permissible during public comments, and speakers must conclude their remarks at the end of their three minutes. Let me pull up the list of speakers and refresh it. Bear with me just one moment. Of course, it has been difficult, but I think I have it right here. I believe our first speaker is Chris Roman.
Can you hear me?
We can, welcome.
Alright, thank you. I'm sorry to say, the activism of this Board and administration and how it has been operating in its own interests, rather than representing the parents of this county, is shameful. You've removed any trust that parents have in the schools and instead put a divide between the schools, teachers, and parents. You have taken the joy and learning out of our children's education, and instead of institutions and learning, they're now just institutional training grounds for your radical equity agenda. Instead of bringing a community together and supporting a proper education for our children, you instead have implemented a divisive and radical agenda under the guise of equity, which any reasonable person knows is just a political lie to exert control over its subjects. This was culminated at the last meeting, when you proposed and passed the resolution to address harm caused to students. This was utterly ridiculous to even be proposed, as it was clearly manufactured from the dramatization of the readings by the Board to the scripted activists speaking on its behalf. The only divisive, racist, and hateful actions being conducted in our schools are, in fact, your actions. You say you serve underrepresented kids and use that as your justification for the implementation of this divisive agenda. But in fact, you are only serving yourselves and your activist cronies who are planted at each one of these meetings with phonies scripted and sometimes theatrical support for their nonsense. By your own reporting, you're reining over failing schools. You're impeding our kids from learning, not helping them. You put up barriers and hurdles, like these arbitrary seating limits, for when you finally decided to hold in-person meetings. You change meeting times and formats to discourage parent pushback. You create policies to justify your divisive equity agenda for insurance so when a parent complains or questions you, you point to the policy. The only people who agree with these policies are you. Why? Because you're cashing in on them. You've been fiscally irresponsible with our tax dollars, using them as flush funds for their own personal activism. You spent at least three-quarters of a million dollars on the equity agenda with no benefits to our kids. It's all been spent on equity audits, school remnames, and yes, equity salaries. So what if our kids are failing? As long as you have your fake equity in place, so be it. You could have fixed our third-world bathrooms or provided sorely-needed transportation for our kids participating in sports, which you've almost destroyed with your arbitrary limits on events, participation, mask and vaccine mandates, all which have no basis in science. You've simply let down this community and lost our trust. I think it best that you step down from your post so you can be replaced by serious, common-sense people who can heal our community and fix the damage you've done to our schools. who can heal our community and fix the damage you've done to our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Have a good night. Our next speaker is Jackie Barker.
Hello?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm just hoping the board can give some clarity on the process of the required monthly face covering vote per SC 654, that all public schools should adopt the policy regarding the use of face coverings by employees and students, where a vote must be made at least once a month on the policy if it should be modified. It's come to the attention of parents that the vote was not made at the last board meeting and it was listed on the consent agenda as well as the September 13th board meeting. I couldn't find it on the past meeting minutes either. If you could just please clarify how the, a monthly mask voting is done and when it took place, whether it was done in a closed session or open public meeting. Speaking on the current face covering policy of the schools, why are the high school students still not allowed to take face masks breaks during the seven-hour school day? They get 15 minutes to lunch and they're not even allowed to talk and that's, that's it for the whole day. Maybe if they were also given a longer lunch period, they would have more time to eat the food that is in shortage instead of throwing it in the trash because there isn't enough time allocated to eat it. Every time I've questioned where the COVID safety guidance comes from, I'm told North Carolina is strong school toolkit. And according to their most recent guidance, they say it's no longer recommended wearing face masks outdoors because it's not supported by current evidence and there's no longer, it's needed due to the low rates in the community and increased rates of vaccination. Orange County schools should follow along with other schools and colleges in the county and allow our children to breathe fresh air when outside and play in sports. And for the sake of being a human, let them talk at lunch. These kind of policies are what's so frustrating to parents. Like being, you know, we see different policies at schools in the same county. We see counties next door with no mask mandates, schools at full capacity, but board meetings are limited. I'm wondering which one of you is going to speak up and advocate for the children that are suffering from wearing a mask all day, especially those with health conditions and disabilities. Up to this point, it's been silence from board members on questioning these masks. So when, when do you think the masking is going to end? What's the goalpost? It, it seems to keep moving. We just need to be upfront and honest with parents. What are you discussing behind closed doors? Because during the meetings, I don't hear any of you openly discuss masks or ask. It's not science if you can't ask questions. Vaxting in the best interest of all the children, are you upholding your sworn oath of office? The second item I want to address is on the vaccination requirements for volunteers in schools. A friend of mine reached out to the board and was asked, you know, asking about this and was told it wasn't a board's decision and there weren't any details. So whose decision was it? And the last thing I want to address is the inappropriate books in the schools. There's been a lot of talk and reports of pornographic library books in North Carolina schools. Can the board please give a statement about the books that were found in Orange County schools? And I've also heard that there's a current open criminal investigation in the schools. Can the community please be informed?
Thank you, Ms. Barker. I'm going to have to ask you to finish up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Lesko Brandon.
I'm unable to find anyone with that name or matching phone prefix. Sorry.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abir Al Husani.
Hello?
Hello, welcome.
I want to thank you to give me the opportunity to speak. I would like to speak about the problem of, of meals provided to children in schools during breakfast, lunch and snacks. Because schools have a limited budget for making student meals, school food need to be lower cost and not require much preparation, which implies food usually contain very high sugar, fat and salt levels. And according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, an estimated 17% of children and adults since age between two and 19 years old are obese. The potential results of childhood obesity can range from physical complications such as diabetes and high blood pressure to social obstacles like low self-esteem and depression. Those difficulties can lead children who don't perform as well in school. And many researchers conclude that the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010 was linked to enhanced dietary equality for lunch and for children who were part of the National School Lunch Program. Unfortunately, as the study noticed, the act has been watered down over the years and it now allows fewer whole grains, more flavored milk and more sodium. And the U.S. Department of Agriculture is currently studying changing the policy to allow participating schools to serve fewer serving vegetable. I hope to improve the quality of meals provided to children in schools because paying attention and care to feed our children by providing healthy meals that contain all nutrition is the best investment for future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Sherry Calligan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Dr. Felder and board members, I want to speak this evening to publicly thank you for your efforts to keep students, staff and families safe by passing a resolution against hate. By standing firm and united in the presence of white nationalist groups, you are standing up for the many students and families without the privilege to do so. Thank you. While the board is making strides in the area of equity and standing against hate, it is vitally important to have a pulse on what is happening in our buildings. Staff are overwhelmed. As OCAE Vice President, many teachers have shared that they do not feel that their time is valued. Today, when teachers desperately need a time to prepare final grades and elementary teachers are required to prepare for parent-teacher conferences, many educators' days began and ended with required professional development. I'd like to ask the board to focus on protecting educator time by placing a hold on mandated PD and allowing teachers the time to readjust to the demands of in-person instruction five days a week. When teachers are required to attend PD, that takes away valuable reflection and planning time. It leads to burnout, which directly impacts students. Many OCS teachers have and/or are resigning and deciding to leave the field of education. Students are feeling this impact and this impact will be even greater when teachers continue to leave the classroom. Please focus on what's happening in the schools and help protect educator time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Snipes.
Yes, I'm Sarah Snipes and I'm speaking as the Director of Moms for Liberty for OCS. This evening, I want to speak about last week that Dr. Felder, excuse me, two weeks ago, because I tried to speak on this last meeting and was pulled out of the meeting inappropriately. But three weeks ago, Dr. Felder and three female board members took time out of their busy schedules to come support a curriculum topic which they felt was of utmost importance that Tuesday after the protest that you all are familiar with. They came into an African-American studies class so that they could speak specifically to students about white nationalist groups. And so I want to reiterate that the superintendent and three board members took time out of their day to only go to an African-American studies class to speak about white nationalist groups, instead of speaking about math, science or English. And what they, what they sent and said in that classroom, and I have proof from a student, that white nationalist groups are displaying intimidating behavior, including bigoted, misogynistic, racist, homophobic and transphobic language at school events, board meetings and on school property. That white men are wearing clothing indicating their allegiance to chauvinist and extremist groups representing white supremacy and that there is extreme danger for Orange County students to be recruited by white supremacist groups. This was spoken to students in this class and this is misinformation and it is wrong. They should be, that's what's most critical for our board and their board members is to go speak and target an African-American studies class on these things. It's horrendous. Our test scores are staying, are tanking and you're actually going into classrooms and demonstrating reckless racism because there were people and there are affidavits of people that were at that protest and none of that was done. There were African-American students and parents that participated in that protest. It was not a racist protest. That is clearly misinformation from the board. Dr. Felder and board members, why are you more focused on racism and not education? Parents and teachers are pleading for help for students to get caught back up to grade level. One of my children had three teachers quit in the middle of the middle school year and that was even before COVID hit. I have another student that has had four different principals in four years. What kind of a trade record is that for you, the board? And now we learn there's been homosexual pornography in the schools? It's ridiculous. What are the priorities for the board's curriculum? Porn and racism? Who is accountable for this? You all, board members, are accountable for this. Real education has been lost in this community and our students and community are hurting gravely. I demand that Dr. Felder, the Chief Equity Officer, district officials and board members resign effective, immediately effectively. You guys have to get back to education and stop pushing your political agendas in our classrooms and through our community. It is unacceptable and the parents and students are finally fed up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snipes. Ms. Ackerman?
She's been unmuted.
Ms. Ackerman, are you there? Ms. Ackerman? Lauren Ackerman, can you hear me? Our next speaker is Christina Clark.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Dr. Felder and school board members, I wanted to speak tonight to thank you all for doing your best to keep us safe. I've been to my fair share of board meetings over the last few years, but I never felt unsafe until I came to the September board meeting this year and sat in front of two members of a white nationalist hate group. The Orange County Association of Educators wholeheartedly supports the resolution that you all passed at the last meeting. Prioritizing safety makes Orange County schools a desirable place to work and a nurturing environment for students. Unfortunately, these disruptions do distract us from addressing concerns in our schools. Educators and school staff continue to wait with little patience left for our state legislators to pass their budget and honor the Leandro mandate. Meanwhile, folks all over the state and in our district are leaving education in droves. It is more important than ever that districts heed the concerns of educators if they do not want to lose them. We ask for a modicum of respect as we continue to work long hours and fulfill dizzying expectations from all directions. We were so appreciative of the extra workday this week, yet we became dismayed as our schedule began to fill up with mandated meetings and professional development yet again. I sat in a two-hour professional development this morning to introduce us to yet another computer program we are required to implement this year. Considering our grades are due this week, I could feel the panic setting in as the minutes ticked by. In addition to mandated meetings, we're also preparing to give yet another mandated test to students this week with no explanation or justification. The diagnostic from Edmentum is a notorious one. It gives, it leaves some students in tears since it starts with the hardest questions first and then adds questions as they go, presenting students with a wall of never-ending texts and multiple choice questions. Please consider the emotional harm these tests inflict on students and instead use the data that teachers already collect. Trust us to know which assessments are useful, accurate and minimize emotional harm. When we don't feel trusted or treated as professionals, we leave. When we are asked to compromise our relationships with students with mandated programs and tests, we leave. When we're trusted to make professional decisions about our curriculum and our time, we stay. When we're protected and our time is protected, we can devote ourselves to our students, which is why we're here. Thanks. That's my statement.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Spring Dawson-Mupur.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thanks so much for taking public comment. I am again breathing and taking in the range of perspectives that have been shared and want to express my deep respect and appreciation for the teacher who spoke right before me, my gratitude to you as the board, to Dr. Felder, Dr. Keeling and my children's teachers, principals, school-based support teams. There is so much happening these days, so many challenges flying at our children and our educators. And the most important thing that I could say is thank you and just take a moment to breathe. I want to spend the rest of my moments tonight to focus on our school librarians and say thank you to you too. I see you virtually. I know that you show up as skilled, responsive professionals doing everything that you can to make our children's days better, helping address the many, many stressors flying at our teachers and administrators every day. I think our school libraries are beautiful and joyful places. I know the book fair was such a bright spot for both of my kids in the past week, getting them excited to visit and make their lists with their friends and get excited about reading new books. I find it deeply disheartening that our lieutenant governor is making false claims about pornographic materials in our school libraries, stirring up misunderstanding, fear and anger in our district at such a challenging time when there are so many more important things to think about. As a clinical psychologist, I want to say that I commend our school librarian's efforts to curate books that are inclusive of our children and the full range of diversity in race, culture, sexuality and gender expression in our community. Research over the past year found that four in every 10 LGBTQ plus youth seriously considered suicide. That's a devastating number as a parent, as a community member, as a human. Research is clear that children need to be seen and affirmed in their full humanity. And one way to do that is through books that are inclusive and are real. If you are a parent who is feeling concerned about posts about pornography, please take a minute. Please reach out, be in conversation. Take a minute to think about this. I assure you that gender expression and sexuality are not indoctrinated through reading materials. Please think about what you're teaching your own children and what other children in our community are learning right now about who we are as adults. Please take a minute to be loving, to be reflective. And if you're worried, reach out and ask questions and be in conversation with folks and sort this through.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our final speaker is Deb Childress.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the school improvement plans. I've been struggling with what to say after looking at the starting point data for my children's schools as well as many of the other schools across the district. It is stark. I've been struggling even more to understand the goals for growth, goals that still leave half of students and many of the subgroups behind even after two or three years when we have committed to equity for these groups. I can't help but wonder, who will make it above the line and who will stay below? And it weighs on me because I know that if a person can't read well, their life's options narrow, oftentimes to the point of despair and disengagement. I've had a front row seat for this and it is not something that any child should have to endure. We all, educators and community members, have a solemn obligation to do everything in our means to ensure that every student leaves our schools with the skills needed to leave life. with the skills needed to leave life's doors open so they have the choices to pursue their passions. Sadly, there aren't easy answers, which you know. I don't think the answer is asking teachers to teach more faster at the same time they're differentiating their instruction for students who aren't concepts behind, but oftentimes grade levels behind. An MTSS wasn't designed for 50% of students to be receiving Tier Two and Tier Three services. I also don't think that it's, that the answer is to ask students to learn more faster when they haven't been properly guided on the foundational knowledge needed to learn the new material. The pressure is building and is being reflected in acts of aggression among our students and teachers who are under-resourced, overstretched, and bearing such a tremendous weight to do a job that they love. So I ask you to move with urgency, but also practicality and compassion for our teachers and our children. Let's put our most experienced and innovative teachers in positions to support those students who need it the most. Ask for the resources that you need at the schools. I've heard the board ask, what do you need? And oftentimes, nobody asks for anything. Ask. They can turn you down, but at least if you ask, you will know that you have done everything that you can to help every teacher, every staff member, every student meet their full potential. So thank you for supporting our community in these complicated times. And if we work together, we can do this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Childress. That concludes our public comment for this evening. The next item is our consent agenda. Mr. Atherton has requested to pull the contract addendum for pest control services. Are there any other requests? Then I will take a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
Still moved.
I have a motion from Ms. Smiley, a second from Ms. Hauser. I vote yes. Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
The consent agenda has been approved. Mr. Atherton, I will turn it over to you to discuss the pest control contract addendum.
Thank you. The main question I had is, when I looked through the contract addendum, I saw that it's talking about the pesticides being used outside. And I know one of the reasons we're doing this was to combat the ants that are now showing up because we're eating outside in these areas. So I wanted to find out what we are using that's environmentally friendly, safe for our kids? Is this going to be something that's sprayed on these surfaces that kids are sitting at? And the other, I'll stop there. I have several questions, but I'll stop with that one first.
Good evening, Chair. Would you like me to address? All right, thank you.
Yes, please.
So good evening to all of you. Just wanted to provide insight to some of your questions, Mr. Atherton. First of all, we use an integrated pest management solution in North Carolina. We try to mitigate as many strategies as possible before the use of pesticides. That includes surveillance, monitoring, sealing school buildings, et cetera, controlling pests. What you mentioned is true with the large number of students now being outdoors because we've really transformed our campuses instead of certain areas or fields being used. To the entire campus is now part of our outdoor learning environment and eating lunches outdoors. So we're using more acreage of our property than we have before. And by eating on those, it does bring in pest into play. What we're looking at with this approach that was on this abstract is fire ants only, although it may treat other ground insects. This product is specifically for fire ants and fire ant abatement. The product is ADVION, A-D-V-I-O-N. It's a Syngenta, excuse me, it's a Syngenta Corporation product, and they are a manufacturer, industrial manufacturer, based in Greensboro as well. This product is EPA registered. The product is also authorized for use in non-agricultural and uncultivated areas, including parks and picnic areas, home use, golf courses, institutional sites such as nursing homes, schools, colleges, universities, museums, libraries, sport facilities, and office buildings. So it is an EPA-registered product that has specific applications for institutions such as ours. It's a granular-based product that's put on mounds in areas. There are no significant EPA restrictions as far as surface contact with individuals, meaning, you know, if it touches your skin, you just would go through the normal wash procedures. There's no additional precautions or use statements always. You know, we have, what we utilize is a safety program that includes these safety data sheets that I'm referencing as I'm talking here. Those are available and must be at all of our school locations at all times. So if there is ever a chemical issue, poison control centers contacted and staff can refer to the pesticides or the individuals as well. Mr. Jarwin Hester may be jumping on if we can promote him. He can answer additional questions. But also what we do, whenever we use pesticides, we follow a 72-hour roll, whereas we try to, when we use the pesticides, have those areas closed off or no one in those areas for 72 hours. For instance, you know, we know we had a teacher workday today. We have one tomorrow. So Friday and Saturday were great days for us to use products on our school campuses, knowing that we have at least 72 hours prior to them coming in. Now, if we have to bring individuals onsite within 72 hours, then there's additional regulatory requirements such as posting signs in those areas, sending notifications to teachers and staff that are in those areas. Again, that's whenever they're going to be within that 72-hour window. But we always still continue with our log record-keeping and notifying individuals, principals, custodians, et cetera, whenever pesticides are used. Although we do have individuals on our grounds, staff that are certified with pesticides because of the large applications in the IPM surveillance monitoring, we do utilize outside contractors. And there's two contractors we use, Clegg's and Dodson's Pest Control. Both provide services. Clegg's is over the $50,000 threshold, and so we require board approval to do any more service contracts with them. Dodson's is under that threshold. But we would be utilizing both companies, and they both use the same products. So I'll pause there.
Just a follow-up question. I know that some have reported increase of like yellow jackets or other flying insects. Is there a plan for that? Or how are we mitigating it or to help? And I want to be very clear, I'm against killing bees, obviously, so I...
Me too. We like the pollinators. You know, there are other methods such as trapping and relocating. Typically, what we find, and I don't know because I've not been on the bee watch the last couple of weeks, I will tell you, I got stung yesterday, and it was, it was not a fun experience. So, but certainly relocate. Ground hornets are the major pest that we might see, especially as the grounds with the rains get softened, and that might be one of the items. Again, but that's part of surveillance. That's part of notifying and monitoring and then coming up with mitigation strategies. And I just, I don't know this evening, you know, what the strategies are for the ground hornets, but it certainly would be addressed as part of our IPM program.
So maybe, maybe just the last question on that. Ken, is there, do, does staff just report it to maintenance? Do they open a ticket?
Or how's it being?
I understand the surveillance because y'all can't be everywhere at once. So they would just contact maintenance or?
Yeah, both. We have a logbook that they can record in, and then Mr. Hester takes all emails or phone calls related to pest on a campus. I mean, it's great that this board has supported for many years now us to have our own environmental health and safety specialists as part of the facilities team. And so any environmental concerns, pest control issues, et cetera, we have a person on staff who handles and fields and provides best practices and guidance and then works directly with external companies or the Health Department's environmental health staff or other agencies as well. And so we are very appreciative of the support to have a dedicated position for items like this.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, that's all the questions I had.
Would you like to motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion. From Mr. Atherton, a second from Ms. Hauser. I vote yes. Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Contact addendum has been approved. Thank you, everyone. The first item on our regular agenda is COVID-19 health and safety updates. Dr. Felder?
Thank you so much, Chair McKenzie. And so at this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Aberley to return and also recognize our guest tonight, Ms. Quintana Stewart, Director of the Orange County Health Department, is joining us tonight, as well as Dr. Dani Benjerman, co-chair of the ABC Science Collaborative, distinguished professor of Pediatrics, Duke University School of Medicine. They are joining us as well. We continue to appreciate their collaboration as we continue to make decisions with regards to COVID-19 and safety and health in our schools. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Aberley.
Thank you very much. Wanted to give a brief update this evening and also give the board and community update on where we are with mitigation strategies and efforts within the schools. Obviously, our first and foremost goal is the health, safety, and protection of our students and our staff or anyone else visiting our campuses. As Dr. Felder said, we do have two of our colleagues here that have been assisting and guiding the school district. We'll do their presentations first and allow the board to ask any questions for their updates. And then the remaining five items on the agenda that you see before you, I'll be back to dive into deeper details on those health and safety updates. So with that, I believe our first guest, if you'll go to the next slide, introducing our two guests, but Ms. Quintana Stewart will begin. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Felder and board. Thanks for having me this evening. I won't be before you long. And actually, I am happy with the information that I'm able to share with regards to our update on COVID-19 here in Orange County. Next slide. So I have quite a bit of updated information from when I had to turn the slides in. So as of today, our case count in Orange County is trending like much of the other communities across the state, and it is going down. And so over the last seven days, we've had only 90 new COVID-confirmed cases. Over the past 14 days, we've had just 244, not 307. And the thing I am most excited to share with you all tonight is that our community transmission rate has gone down. This means that our case rate over the last seven days is now under 100. In fact, today, the number was, I think it is... Well, shucks, I was so excited and then I didn't write it down. Sorry, but we are now in substantial. So we are no longer in high transmission rate. We are now in substantial. There are four levels, so it's high, substantial, moderate, and low. So we are trending and moving in the right direction. So I'm very excited to see us change from being a red-colored county on the CDC transmission map to now orange. So kudos to the community for hanging in there. I know it's been tough, but we are doing the hard work and we are trying to come out of this pandemic. 5% positive as of today, it is now down to 1.9%, so well under the 5% desired rate. And for our deaths, we have now a total of 110. So that is three additional deaths since our last came to present COVID update to you all. Next slide. So with regard to the hospitals, again, I have some updated information from when I put the original slides together. So during the week of October 16th, the statement is still true. Our COVID-like illness visits to the ED decreased. So again, that is, that's good news for us. Since July 1st, nothing has changed about this statement, but the majority of our COVID-positive admissions and ICU COVID admissions and our COVID-related deaths have occurred in unvaccinated individuals. So our hospitals continue to experience some staffing shortages. And I would say that's not unique to just the hospital. We too at Health, lots of the healthcare physicians, we are experiencing some staffing challenges at this time. So that's, that's the outlook for the healthcare system. Next slide. And so nothing about this slide has changed either. It has been updated with the COVID-like illness surveillance report that DHA just uploads each Thursday at 4:00. But the variant that continues to circulate and that we are seeing predominantly in all of our cases remains the Delta variant. So that is still the strand that is circulating in our community at this time. Next slide. Here, again, nothing much has changed, just a little bit. The very last bullet, our post-vaccination cases increased just a little. So as of October 9th, the weekend in October 9th, post-vaccination, or we also call them breakthrough cases, is made up 22% of our COVID-19 cases in North Carolina. But you may also be keeping up, and you'll notice that we had quite a few approvals this past weekend. So last Friday, the boosters were approved for Moderna and the Janssen, J&amp;J vaccine. Pfizer had already been approved. So we anticipate in coming weeks that the post-vaccination cases will start to decrease. Next slide. So with regards to our vaccination efforts here in the county, we still are the leading county across the state with our vaccination rates. Our percentage didn't actually change, so we still have 70% of our population that is fully vaccinated and 72% with at least their first dose. However, the numbers have changed a bit. So for a total people fully vaccinated, we are now at 103,778. So that's an additional 233 individuals since I pulled this data last week. And then for those that are partially vaccinated, we saw an increase of 151 individuals, putting us at 107,452. So we continue with our vaccination efforts here in the county. Next slide. Again, nothing changed on this slide. So the breakdown by race is the same. 43% of our American Indian, Alaska natives are vaccinated, fully vaccinated. Asian Pacific Islanders, 70%. Black African American, 52%. And then our white residents, 62%. Next slide. Here, again, no change. So 65% when we look at ethnicity, community members are fully vaccinated. And then the other 63% non-Hispanic, fully vaccinated. And next slide. So we did see a slight increase here with age group that I'm sure you all are watching closely. So with our 12 to 17-year-old age group, it increased slightly. So they went from 70% there to 72% now, fully vaccinated. 18 to 24-year-olds also went up just a bit. It's now at 52%. And then the 25 to 49-year-old went up two points and is at 83%. So this is where we stand with our vaccination rates here in the county, broken down by age. Last slide. And so again, our approach with COVID prevention continues to be a layered, a layered approach. So we're still encouraging folks to be vaccinated. We know it prevents hospitalization and death. And then we are still practicing the three Ws. So we wear our masks, we wait the distance, and wash our hands often when we're going to be out and about in the community. So I would just like to say thank you and kudos to the entire Orange County community because, again, we're doing the hard work, but it's paying off because we are slowly coming out of this pandemic, I hope. Because again, we're doing the hard work, but it's paying off because we are slowly coming out of this pandemic, I hope. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. Stewart. I am not seeing any questions. We really appreciate you being here. Oh, Mr. Atherton, I'm sorry. Can you raise your hand on the, I mean, not now, but?
I did, but I didn't change anything. I just tried it back and forth, but.
Will you try it again?
Yeah, here we go. Okay, it says it's raised. Raise hand.
Oh, it doesn't bump your name up to the top of the list, though. So then that doesn't really help me at all.
It worked out.
Raising hands. Anyway, sorry to waste time, y'all.
No, no. Thank you so much for coming in and sharing with us, Ms. Stewart. The one question I had is, of the cases that you're seeing, is it in a certain age group? Is it more of our at-risk younger group? Or is it a mix? Or if you don't have the data, that's okay?
I have it. Yeah. I've been doing these updates all day, doing quite frequently. So for the weekend in 1017, the bulk of our cases are in the 25 to 49-year-old age group. I will say, as I watch this from week to week, we saw a small increase. Well, no, then it was a decrease from last week. So no, 25 to 49, they are consistently the highest age group where we are seeing the positive cases.
All right, thank you.
Bonnie, are you trying to say something?
Yes, I'm looking for my button.
It's okay. It's not showing up the way I need it to, to be able to see who's raising their hand anyway. So I think I would have to the host of the meeting to do it. So yes, just don't let me miss you guys.
I don't know if this is from Ms. Stewart or Dr. Benjamin, but can you, on the breakthrough cases, are these people that were vaccinated earlier and need a booster? Is that what's creating this higher rate of breakthrough cases? Or is there something else? Or do we know?
And I would allow Dr. Benjamin. I don't know that for certain. I don't know if it is folks that were vaccinated earlier or folks that are vaccinated, but they may also have some other underlying condition, meaning that their original first two doses, it was not as effective, and then they were in need of this booster. As we saw early on, folks that have autoimmune kind of diseases or compromised immune systems needed that booster. So I don't have the details. I don't know all the facts around that, but that is what I would suspect.
Thank you.
Sure. So we understand fair about reinfection from mRNA viruses. Prior infection tends to protect you from severe infection later on, but that's imperfect and extremely variable. That's also true for coronaviruses in general. Where for coronaviruses in general, this is before SARS-CoV-2 or COVID-19 protection fairly robust for a few months, then starts to wane over the following 16 months, but is very extremely variable between individuals and very difficult to predict. For vaccination, it's more predictable, both the amount of the immune response and the precision of the immune response. And it is, tends to be variable by patient groups. And obviously, the strongest amount of prevention, just like with viruses in general, is experienced in the first six months after vaccination. So that's what we've seen with SARS-CoV-2. Highest risk are the immune-compromised patients. This is going to be patients, for example, who've had solid organ transplant, cancer chemotherapy, and also who are taking medicines to suppress the immune system. It's clear that that group needs a third dose, and that's why that moved quickly through approval and minimal fuss at FDA. The group that's older than 65 really probably warrants a third vaccine. And this has to do somewhat with the history of the development of the vaccine. We really pushed to get the vaccine through. And it is not uncommon in the history of vaccinology to have a product licensed for years and then go back and say, gosh, we need an additional dose. So we started with Difuria vaccination. Difuria vaccination, when we first started vaccinating for Difuria, looks much different than the schedule today. Same for Protossis and the same for most of the other vaccines on the market. So this garnering of understanding and the increased need for a third dose is kind of consistent with with what happens with vaccines once they've been on the market for a while. And so when you see these breakthrough infections, it's the immune compromise. It tends to be the elderly. And then remember that vaccination with the Delta variant, because we make IgG rather than a lot of IgA for our immune response. It's different types of immune globulin. That really is designed to protect us from severe disease. And so there's, while there is, depending on which article you read, a six-fold reduction in getting infection and passing on infection, there is a 10 or 15-fold reduction in severe disease or hospitalization and death, depending on what age bracket you're, how come you look at. So it's a very, very protective vaccine for severe disease. It's a strong, but not as impressive vaccine for the elimination of acquiring infection. And that part of the protection tends to decrease a little bit earlier and tends to decrease a little bit greater slope in the drop-off and tends to occur in around six months, which is why for health professionals, folks at a little bit higher risk because of their job and folks over 65, you're seeing more and more of those folks get a third dose. But 99% of the deaths have been in the unvaccinated.
Ms. Doyle?
I thank you, both Ms. Stewart and Dr. Benjamin, for your, for keeping us educated. I'm really pleased to see the 72%, I think Ms. Stewart said, fully vaccinated for the 12 to 17-year-olds. I know at the state level, we're just slightly over 50%. So the fact that our county is over 70% is awesome. I don't know if it's at all, do you have a sense if that's fairly evenly distributed Chapel Hill, Hillsborough? I know it's not your job to keep track of our school districts. I'm just curious, but that is pretty, that's a really great number for a population of students such as high school students, it seems to me.
Yes, and unfortunately, I don't know the breakdown. So I don't know geographic location for those.
Any other questions? All right. Dr. Benjamin, I think we're.
Right.
Turn it over to you.
With, ideally, the FDA is considering the five to 11-year-old application and potential EUA this week. And then the CDC will consider that several days later. And we had anticipated this and have been thinking at some, for some time about once the vaccine becomes authorized for five to 11-year-olds, that school boards would start to approach us about when can we start unwinding our mitigation strategies? And so I'm going to introduce you all to some data, some concepts, and then some potential step forward. Next slide, please. As usual, we are simply presenting the science. And I don't really want to get into the details of how masking should or should not occur at lunchtime as a policy. All right, but I'm going to introduce you to some concepts about how different school districts might approach different questions, policy questions that they might have. Go ahead. Next slide, please, based on the science. So as you all know, from this past summer, for schools that were in year-round school and summer school, we had approximately 20 school districts continue to collect data during summer school to look at transmission of the Delta variant within schools. The teal-colored line between mid-June and mid-August is the fraction of COVID-19 cases caused by the Delta variant. So you can see that it really emerged quickly this summer to be nearly 100% of the cases by about mid-July. The green line is for these 20 school districts. If you look along the left-hand Y-axis, there is the COVID infections. The right-hand Y-axis is the percentiles. That's the fraction of Delta. The green line, therefore, is the new infections that were acquired outside of school. And the purple line is the COVID-19 infections that were acquired within school. For these approximately 20 districts, it represents somewhere between a little over 70,000 students in the state of North Carolina and summer school and year-round schools. And so with that, there were questions throughout the country in August. Could schools open safely? And I think, you know, we've certainly answered that this summer scientifically and school districts by their own experience can attest to this. Go ahead. Next slide, please. All right, so during the fall, we've had, from around the country, about 100 school districts submit some data to us around their policies and COVID-19 primary and secondary infections. Some of those from within the state of North Carolina, some of them outside the state of North Carolina. Now, we just started to crack open these results Friday night. So I've done a couple of things. The first is I've obviously anonymized these districts. They're a little bit less than 20. They're a subset of the North Carolina districts. The second thing that I've done is, in order to keep things a little bit confidential for these districts, remember each district that submits data has control over their own data, whether or not any other entities can see their own data. So the number of schools is collapsed. Or any school district that has more than 40, more than 40 schools, they're listed as 50 schools. And so if you have 30 or more schools in your district, you have the number 50 there. If you have between 17 and 30 schools, you're listed as the number 20. Excuse me, 15 to 30, you're listed as the number 20. If you have between, if you have more than eight schools, you're listed as the number 10. And then there's school districts that are in the four, five, six, seven schools in a school district range. Those are listed as the number five. Now, the primary infections have been adjusted a little bit because some of this information is, it's not entirely vetted. So these numbers are rounded off, just to give you all some perspective around the concepts that I'm going to do, give you. So the primary infections, these are acquired outside the community. So you can see school district number eight is a large school district. They had 780 infections acquired outside of their schools, and they had nine cases of within-school transmission across that entire district through the first quarter of instruction, giving them a ratio of primary to secondary around 86. And the reason why we are using this ratio, we've presented this ratio before in our data. And what it does is, it helps to account for the fact that in different parts of the country, different numbers of infections are coming into these schools. And the school's responsibility is actually to prevent the secondary transmission. You have very high rates of infection in your community, you're going to have a lot of primary cases. So talking about primary cases or total infections, that does not give insight into how well the schools are doing to prevent infection. The second thing that it doesn't do is, you know, it's really, for Orange County, you would anticipate a different number of secondary infections than you would in Wake County schools or than you would in a single charter school. So talking only about secondary infections or total numbers of within-school transmission, that's also not helpful. Different schools and different school districts, actually now, these days, especially when you are looking at a national program like we have, have very different definitions of what's a close contact, who goes into quarantine, what are quarantine requirements? This is variable, considerable variation throughout the country. So looking at a secondary attack rate in the school year 2021, 2022, it's much less reliable as it relates to the denominator than it was in school year 2020, 2021. So we've used this ratio to help understand how schools are doing in preventing secondary transmission, given the amount of burden of infection that's in their community. The school at the top here, very high ratio, very good job. The school at the bottom is a school district that is the ratio of 4.5. You're seeing that they have more COVID transmission within school. We then link these numbers to a couple of things. What kind of policies are you doing within your school district? What kind of adherence do you have to masking, et cetera? We also talk through with school superintendents, you know, what's your risk tolerance for COVID? And how much within-school transmission as a district, are you, are you comfortable with? And that will help guide you as far as what policies you want. There clearly, in states outside the state of North Carolina, for example, and in several counties within North Carolina, a very, very high risk tolerance for large amounts of COVID in the schools, as evidenced by not having a mask mandate, God bless you, Chair, not having a mask mandate endorsed. So you can see that there's some variation here, and it has to do some with some of these policies and some of it having to do with adherence. Okay, next slide, please. So in 2020, 2021, we had a foundational understanding that consistent and universal masking allows for safe in-person instruction. And we led much of the research in the United States on that. Our research was then replicated by eight or nine other research groups throughout the country. Our foundational understanding, we anticipated this school year would relate to vaccination. That is, once you get up to a high level of vaccination, essentially, the pandemic moves to an endemic to be an endemic. So what we know, and here's some of what we know and here's some of what we don't know. So vaccination reduces, as previously discussed, but not eliminate the spread of infection. That is, if I'm infected, I'm much less likely to infect others if I'm vaccinated. That has to do with my, how long I have a high viral load. I develop a viral load, but the number of days where I'm spewing infectious virus is substantially lower than somebody who's not vaccinated. My acquisition of infection is lower, but not eliminated if I'm vaccinated. Obviously, severity of infection is dramatically lower with vaccination. Prior infection provides some protection for at least several months, but is less predictable. Now, the, some of a substantial amount of vaccination and prior infection provides protection to a community, but precisely defining that is something we don't know. How much is enough? And different communities, we know have a different risk tolerance for COVID. And we know from other viruses that are not, helps predict how much vaccination provides protection to a community. So with measles, we need a very, very high vaccination. Mucus has a much higher are-not than SARS-CoV-2. And with, sorry, the COVID-19. And COVID-19, we also are going to be gaining some protection from prior infection. So a considerable amount of the population older than age 12 right now has either had previous infection or been vaccinated or both. Has either had previous infection or been vaccinated, or both. Very high percentage has been either infected, vaccinated, or both. So at this point, we can start talking about unwinding some mitigation strategies. So, although we have uncertainty about what strategies to do and how fast. We can start thinking about how to do that. Go ahead, next slide, please. So unwinding a mitigation strategy, whatever that mitigation strategy is. So, step one is to collect your own data. And in Orange County schools, you've started to do that, what your vaccination rates are. You have that at the county level, you've also got that, some information from your high school athletes. Your high school athletes and teacher vaccination rates. And county-wide vaccination rates are not perfect information. About the fraction of the kids in your specific high school are vaccinated, but it's predictive. You've got also your own data from how well you're doing in your high schools. As far as primary and secondary infections. It's very reassuring that you have a very high rate of vaccination in your athletes. You have a very high vaccination rate in your adults in your county. And you have a, a high vaccination rate in your 12 to 17-year-olds in your county. And in your high schools, you have a very low secondary, number of secondary infections in the month of October. And we can compare you to other districts that are submitting data. Because of the, the agreement the superintendents have. And I've talked to Dr. Felder about some of your data compared to others. And your high schools are doing quite well as it relates to secondary infections. You then outline your own level of risk tolerance. Now, I can tell you, Orange County schools, if I had a spectrum, not that there's a right or a wrong. But there are very, very risk tolerant school districts and they're very, very risk averse. School districts and everywhere in between. Orange County is on the, what I would classify as kind of a risk averse district. That's not a, not a value judgment, it's just the decisions that I've seen you all make relative to other districts. Not only in the state of North Carolina, but around the country. You'll tend to seek a very, very low risk of COVID transmission within your schools. So, and I'll get to this concept here on this next slide to show it to you visually. You unwind, you then decide to unwind a mitigation strategy, whatever that might be for your district. And we can give you some suggestions, it might be things like masking outside, for example. Attendance at sporting events, for, for example. Provided that those sporting events are outdoors. You then keep collecting your own data, reassess in two to four weeks. Now, if your secondary infection substantially increase, you consider either pause. Hey, we're not gonna unwind any more, more mitigation strategies right now. Or you consider putting the mitigation back in its place if things really kind of rapidly emerge. And then, on the other hand, if all goes well, you take a look at your next couple of mitigation interventions. Maybe you go, by that time, elementary and middle schools have full access to vaccination. You might be more comfortable making some decisions for elementary schools and middle schools at that time. You might be more comfortable making more decisions to unwind more things at the high school at that time. Right? And you take this stepwise process until you're at a point where things start to look like 2019. Go ahead, next slide, please. So, here's the concept visually. Remember, you all are on, as I look at this slide, more on the risk averse side. Rather than a risk tolerance slide, please keep in mind that we work with school districts outside the state of North Carolina. So we do have some districts that are doing voluntary masking right now. That are entering data into the ABC Science Collaborative Database. They're doing voluntary masking, they are very, very risk tolerant. Mask mandates indoors, that's the majority of school districts, certainly in North Carolina. And certainly in the ABC Science Collaborative. You all are one of the districts that has masking outdoors, I think, right now. That is a, that's a very, very risk averse district at the moment. There are districts that are quarantining per CDC. DHHS, as you all know, is a much more thoughtful approach to quarantine. A little bit more based on the data, which has to do with a mask exemption. There's test to stay, which is now under investigation by the ABC Science Collaborative. We're, we're investigating that in several school districts in partnership with DHHS. As far as it relates to lunch, again, some school districts are outside. Some school districts have a complete lunch protocol as it relates to how long the kids are allowed to eat and distancing and so forth. Again, you guys are a risk averse district. Vaccinate for all students and staff. So for example, this is mandated in the Los Angeles, the LA Unified School District, for example. Vaccinate or cancel or not be eligible for extracurricular activities. This is now required in several states. Encourage vaccination by a policy, this is more like Orange County. Or just vaccination by education, which is a substantial fraction of the districts in North Carolina. The same thing goes for ventilation and testing. So as I look at Orange County, your vaccination is high in your community. Your vaccination is high in your high school, student age brackets in your county. Your vaccination levels are high in your high school athletes. This is a district that if you chose to, could start moving. And unwinding some of the things that are at the, as I look at the screen, the left-hand side of the screen. And start to move as we face the screen toward the right-hand side of the screen and see how things are going. Those, those are the concepts around risk averse and risk tolerance and unwinding for mitigation. Essentially, it's a multi-step problem, process. Get your own data, you've done that. Consider some things to unwind, those can be brought forth by your school staff. Decide to unwind a couple of strategies. Continue to assess your data, reassess in a couple of weeks. And then move forward again or take a pause. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Dr. Benjamin. This is an exciting conversation.
This is a happy one, thank you.
Yes.
Really good.
Board members, Ms. Smiley and Ms. Doyle.
Great. Before I ask my question, I just want to say the idea of test to stay. I am just, I'm very open to that idea to maximize student time in school. Especially knowing that sometimes students may have these symptoms, sore throat, runny nose, that are very common childhood ailments. So, it sounds like we're not ready to move in that direction yet, but I just wanted to say I'm open to it. One question about this, so if, if cases in the broader community are still continuing to go down. So that the idea of like sort of evaluating how it's going, the loosening, and cases in the community are still going down. And let's say we're not observing, we're not like sure about secondary transmission. But at the same time, we see case rates in the school community going up, would you think about that differently? So, even if we weren't identified as secondary transmissions. But if we were sort of on a different trajectory than like the county data, for example.
Yeah, so that, that's a really good question. I would anticipate two things. First of all, this is why the secondary cases are so important for you to track via contact tracing. And by as much testing as you can do. The second thing is that this is why the fact that you have such a highly vaccinated, relatively speaking. High school population is so important. I've taken care of, I've taken care of a lot of kids with COVID in the hospital. And in fact, you know, the past couple of days, I have eight right now. Four with MISC, three with enough respiratory distress to be in the ICU. During their hospital stay at one point. And one who has kind of a coincident positive COVID infection and is in the hospital for other reasons. I'm, I'm struggling to think of a child that I've taken care of who's been vaccinated. So, your, you know, coronaviruses, once they grab a foothold in the human population. Are exceedingly, to the extent that they have with COVID-19, are exceedingly difficult to eradicate. For a whole host of biologic reasons. And so cases are going to be a part of life. But for the, for the most part, severe disease is something that we can avoid. So I would say that when you see cases fluctuate up. I would first focus on, A, how much am I vaccinated? And here your high schools are, high school students are highly vaccinated. B, how much secondary transmission do I have? And, and we may see some schools with discordant community rates. Versus secondary transmission rates, and we've seen that throughout the pandemic.
Ms. Doyle, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna thank you for this presentation, Dr. Benjamin. And I have my guess at which district we are. You know, our primary infections are posted and we don't have that many secondary. And so having that high ratio of primary to secondary transmissions is really, really great. So I thank you for encouraging us to track our own data and, and knowing that that means we've had better policies and better adherence. And that's helped get us to where we are. So, I really appreciate this, thank you.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank him as well for all the information. And one question I had is, a- as we look at this and we discuss it, I, I realize, you know, it's on a risk tolerant. And, you know, it seems like some of these could be more risk tolerant. While other, others are, you know, ones we wouldn't necessarily. For example, ventilation, right? It's good, healthy to keep good ventilation in our school. That may be one we keep forever, but other ones we may say to move over. And just like Ms. Smiley said, I would be supportive of test to stay as well, for example. But we should, should we look at these all independently or overall? Or, you know, what's your recommendation as we look and talk about these?
So, when I, when I look at your policies, the things that are, I would talk, call a very good first step. It might be low-hanging fruit. Go travel with things for which the science is the least robust. So, outdoor masking would be something where the science is much less robust. Than indoor masking. The details of how lunch is done. For example, the length of time or the amount of time spent talking. On the other hand, it's clear from other large communal environments. That if lunch is held indoors or breakfast or dinners held indoors, that's a high-risk activity. But if meals are outside, that might be a time to give the kids a COVID break. If you will, a, a, a focus on COVID break, if you will, right? Whereas if it's foul weather to the point that we're eating indoors, shoulder to shoulder. That's a much different level of risk, right? So tweaking some things around lunch might be something for you guys to consider. Outdoor attendance at, numbers of humans allowed in outdoor events. There, the science there is less robust as far as how risky that is. Compared to 20 or 30 human beings in a classroom for eight hours together. I think test to stay right now, remember, this is a, this needs to be done under a research agreement with DHHS. I think test to stay is going to work. I think that we'll, we'll have an answer to that in a few weeks. And that is something that I think will be well-supported by the science. There's lots of speculation right now, Mr. Atherton, about test to stay. I know you and Ms. Smiley worked out, both spoke to it. I think the three of us speculate similarly about test to stay. But I would just say that although there's lots of speculation right now, the amount of true data is quite limited. And that's one of the reasons why we're working closely with both the CDC and DHHS right now. The first families were enrolled in that study last week. And, and I would anticipate we would have some answer to that in, in November, December. Given our pre-specified endpoints that we've worked out with DHHS. And I, I think that that is a, gonna be a powerful tool to minimize quarantine. And I also, yeah, I'm gonna go off the rails a little bit, I'm going to speculate for 2022. Think that there'll be a number of districts when they come back from Christmas break. They will have their five-to-11-year-olds have the opportunity to vaccinate. And one could envision in calendar year 2022. As school districts vaccinate their five-to-11-year-olds, as well as their 12-to-17-year-olds. You could see school districts moving to a test-to-stay strategy as they begin to have unmasked. Education during calendar year 2022. We're multiple steps, multiple research steps away from that. That's, that's not October 2021.
Ms. Smiley?
Yeah, this is actually just a request for staff. I don't believe the board has seen a report of how many secondary infections we've had total, that's not reported on our dashboard. And so, I know that once you get to five that are linked together, that that triggers a cluster. But I presume that those aren't the only cases of secondary transmission that we've had. So, would just like to see that data.
On the previous slide, I did not include Orange County schools. In part because I'm just starting to understand your data and walking through that with your superintendent. I feel as though I have a good feel for what's happening in your high schools. I have less clarity as it relates to the middle schools and the elementary schools. And so while I am being complimentary toward you as a school district, that is limited to high schools where I understand your data. I have no comment about the other age brackets yet, because I don't, I just need to work through those data some more, in more detail.
Ms. Howser?
Thank you for this presentation, it's very helpful. I have a question of, have, has ABC done any look into COVID spread on buses? On school buses?
Yes, however imperfect and also imperfect and limited. So it clearly does occur. But if, and if, and if the kids are masked. They can ride together reasonably. One of the problems, some of the school districts very much struggle with the fact that they don't have monitors. On their buses and they have extremely variable. compliance on their buses. And especially in school districts where there's not only extremely variable compliance on buses, but also the windows are not kept open on the regular. There can be, there can be real challenges there. And that's certainly happened in, in a couple of school districts.
Any final questions for Dr. Benjamin? Thank you so much for being here with us and your continued partnership, Dr. Benjamin. We appreciate you so much.
Absolutely. And thank you all. And thanks for the work that you all are doing for, for Orange County kids. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks. Bye bye. Now I will turn it back to Mr. Abely.
Thank you very much. So following up on that, if we'll go to the next slide. We do have a couple of updates for the board based on the information and data that you've received. I'll just highlight again in summary, three things. One, as a community, we have moved from the designation from high community transmission to substantial. So I've highlighted that. Here this evening, you've heard about the high vaccination rates of our high school students in, in that particular age group. And then also having a high community vaccination rate. And so we do feel like there is an opportunity here. This chart was presented to you and was voted on on the 27th of September at your meeting almost a month ago. And so we wanted to bring this back before you this evening. And this, we'll have some additional recommendations in a second based on students. But this is concerning outdoor venues and events where we have fans or other individuals attending. We would no longer have capacity restrictions for those outdoor venues. However, an update to this slide based on the previous recommendation, when we had high community transmission for the Delta variant and did not have as high of student or adult vaccination rates. The recommendation was six feet of physical distancing. And we would move that to a three feet recommended outdoors, but there would not be a requirement outdoors. We would maintain the six feet of physical distancing indoors, which is still consistent with current guidance for any of the non-family members, non-household members that would be attending events, et cetera. And so do recommend that we move forward with, again, the no fan capacity restrictions at outdoor venues. Recommended three feet mask would be optional on the outdoors for individuals. And as far as concessions, we would allow those outdoor concessions to continue effective immediately upon the, the board voting on this this evening. But those are the recommendations. And I'll pause there if there's any questions about the four items on this chart.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, just a quick question on the concessions as we get into moderate and low, which we're hopeful we're headed that way. Have y'all got any recommendations, especially as we're hearing our community vaccination rate is so high? Is that? Got any insight to what that'll be or still discussing it?
Still, still reviewing it again. We're, we're reviewing every, if that's for me, we're reviewing it every 14, 14 to 21 days, mainly 14 days. It will also depend on where we are with mask requirements. Because there is some consistency between requirement of mask. And are you allowing folks to take that mask off to consume items for concessions? And is that a brief period of time? Or can I hold my drink for four hours and just take a sip every few minutes? And therefore I don't wear the mask the entire time I'm at your event. And so we would look at multiple things at that point in time. You know, do we have any physical distancing requirement? What are the mask requirements? Can we sell concessions and maybe individuals just step outside and consume the concessions to come back in to the venue? Are we able to open up a different area, you know, rather than folks congregating in a lobby or in a gymnasium trying to consume? Maybe we have a different location folks can go to, to consume and then put your mask back on and come back in.
Yeah, the, the question I was headed to, and you, you kind of hit on it, Mr. Abely, was since we're hosting state and there'll be a lot of people, I'm sure, to come see that. Are they going to be allowed to have concessions outside? So they can eat outside or drink outside. But if you're going to be in the game, we're not going to allow food or drink in there? Or have y'all talked that through? Because it's kind of different.
We have not. I, you know, again, hearing about the, the where folks landed with the state playoffs. We'll be debriefing and reviewing what the requirements and recommendations will be. And if so, you know, would, would advise or update the board if we did to do a, a special meeting? We would do that, but we're not prepared this evening for any recommendations for moderate, low or based on us hosting an indoor playoff event. That was not on our considerations this evening.
Okay, I think the game is Tuesday.
So maybe when we, it was when we motion it, motion with the understanding that staff can perceive how they see fit for that game or something like that with outdoors.
If I could add, I, I just want to reassure the board that we would certainly consult with the Orange County Health Department and ABC Science Collaborative in that decision making process as we have.
Ms. Smiley?
And then Ms. Hauser, I saw your hand too.
Yeah, thanks. I, I appreciate this scale and that, you know, we have a pathway to move down it. And initially I was thinking I would support this. But my question is, you know, I, I had thought that what we were, were going to do is like, wait until we were like really clear that we were in that next bucket before we made the transition. My concern is like, we literally just moved into substantial within the past couple of days, I think. And so if by Friday, we're at high community transmission again, do we have to then recommunicate everything out? Like, okay, we're going back to, you know, the, the requirements for high. I just, I have some concern about doing it so quickly after we've moved into substantial because of that. I'm supportive of making the move. I just would hate to like then have to communicate that we're moving backwards and cause confusion for the community.
So I would think, Mrs., thank you very much, Mrs. Smiley, for that. I mean, that possibility always exists, just depending on the circumstances. And I think we also need to consider the other data points that Dr. Benjamin pointed out. The high vax rate, again, this is for our high schools, right? So the high vax rate of our students, of our staff, the community, taking that into consideration as well. And I would also add that this next phase was done in consultation with our health and medical professionals. And so Doc, both the ABC Science Collaborative and the Orange County Health Department are supportive of this recommendation.
Thank you. Just to clarify, if, if it, if we do go back up into high, is the plan then to go back to lower capacity and six feet of distancing?
Yes, that was the, the plan. If, if we, if we need to adjust and we need to tighten the mitigation or restrictions, then we would do that following the outline that we presented unless, as was noted, there needs to be exceptions along the way.
Ms. Hauser?
I just have to, how, how many cases at this point do we have related to athletics? Because, and one of the things that keeps playing for me is unlike school, athletics are voluntary. That if people don't feel safe, they don't need to go in the crowd. I mean, there's lots of things that people say are safe. I'm not going. So if people don't feel safe, they don't need to go to the game. But, you know, but I'm just curious how many cases we have seen amongst our students and staff related to athletics at this point?
So, so primarily, again, what we're talking about here is athletic events. This could certainly apply to outdoor venues. Some, you know, we've talked with the arts programs about having outdoor plays or having outdoor performances, et cetera. And we would follow this same, this same chart for them as well. With the athletic cases, I'm aware of two cases the last 14 days. And I believe there's been two cases amongst, I mean, that's at the high school level. Two cases amongst staff members, coaches as well during that time period. What we, we have difficulty trying to break the data down when we look at community transmission. It's how many individuals may have attended event or if we have any secondary cases. We do ask in tracking, but you know, if a student comes down, you know, trying to find out, did they get it from a peer group, did they get it from within the school, did they get it from the community? Did they get it because they attended an event with other students? And that's where it starts to get a little more difficult breaking down the data, which is, is why we also look at the mitigation of having folks vaccinated as well. So that, you know, I just, I, I don't know that we can break down the data more than that. Although we do try to ask and find out, you know, do, are we seeing things where students attended an event or a social or something that would have caused secondary transmissions?
Ms. Doyle?
I think you're on mute. Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Abely. Um, so I am supportive of this, but I have two questions. One is around when we implemented some of these restrictions. It was both from a health safety standpoint and also from a staff capacity standpoint with contact tracing. And I know that we've approved hiring of positions that were then a little bit tricky to fill or have people trained. And so my two questions are, where are we with our staff capacity with contact tracing? And then my second, my second piece has to do with communication of where we are with quarantining. If, if, if there are two students who were side by side at the game and they weren't wearing masks. Just want to make sure that if a student has to be quarantined, that families are like aware of what the current quarantine protocols are regarding individuals who aren't masked and, and exposed to one another.
Yep. So I'll, I'll kind of review those and thank you for those questions. Ms. Compton could not be with us this evening. She had an emergency this afternoon that she had to tend to. And so she wasn't able to be here. When we, when we look at students and the quarantine procedures, there hasn't been any changes based on the information here. I know there's discussion of a toolkit update possibly coming this week. And so any of these requirements or things we put in place, there are no changes to our current protocol or practices or quarantine procedures. I do think what you mentioned is, is critical. I know our team was scheduled to meet this afternoon and talk about communications and quarantine protocol. Following whatever action the board takes this evening, we also need to make sure that we're continuing to communicate that. And also why we still have a recommendation for three feet of physical distancing outdoors, even though it's just a recommendation and a still recommendation for masking is recommended. But again, you know, we, we do need individuals to also understand the risk and responsibilities with COVID and COVID transmission and know that this is, this is not new. And our students and our families have been dealing with this for, for quite some time. But we, we will need to communicate the expectations because we wouldn't want parents drop off students to go to a game and expecting that they're having their mask on. And there's, you know, strict requirements. We need, we do need to communicate and let folks know that there would be some recommended changes if those were approved this evening. And I'm sorry if I missed your other part of your question, but I think I was holding that for Sylvia.
The other one was just the capacity with contact tracing. And how are we with, like, for example, the nurses at the high school tier where most of these sporting events would be taking place, having to support the need to contact trace?
Yeah. So we're, we're, we've done well initially. We had nine individuals that she trained last week. By the end of the week, we were down to four for various reasons. And so the company was working to get us back to six as of today. And so we're, we're continuing to work to fill those positions and keep individuals. You know, for, for some individuals, it was they couldn't meet some of our requirements when it comes to masking or other, other requirements that we have for employees. And so, you know, once they went through the vetting process, they decided that, you know, they weren't able to, to be a candidate for, for the company. Other concerns, you know, possibly, you know, just the amount of work, the workload. And really, once they come through the training, they get a better understanding of what the expectations are. And know that just like it, it was for our school nurses, it is a tremendous task to do contact tracing and keeping up with cases, phone calls, emails, and reviewing the data for, for what's being required. So what we should be at six, I will confirm and give the board an update this week. And so, you know, as we consider and move into the next phase, which I know you all have asked and inquired about with this, which is the testing. That's important because we need those contact tracers and we need those individuals supporting the school nurses and our district as we start to roll out additional testing. And I should have an update by Friday on that schedule for, for the board.
Ms. Hauser?
As I, just as I look on the chart, it's going to be a very long time before we go any further with with lifting restrictions. It's pretty minor changes. So, and I don't have a problem with that. I'm just noticing that. This is, this is a big ship, but, but we're going to be wearing masks indoors for a long time. So there was a time where we had indoor restrictions on the number, number, restrictions on the number of fans a student can have indoors. And we, that's gone, right? The only thing that, it's only about the capacity of the venue. Is that correct?
That, that's correct because indoors were requiring, rather than focusing on a number, what we're focusing on is what we're trying to accomplish. And if we're trying to accomplish six feet of physical distancing, then that's going to set the capacity number. If it's three feet, then that automatically adjusts the capacity number. Because even in some instances, if you said 50% capacity, most of our gymnasiums could never get to 50% with the physical distancing requirement. And so to cause less confusion, we look at each venue space separately based on the physical distancing requirements. And then we calculate our capacity for the venue based on that.
Right. Thank you. I'm okay with this. I'm okay with this recommendation.
Mr. Abely, were there other recommendations on the next slide before we take a vote?
We are. Can we go to the next slide? And these are our students and staff recommendations. And so, and again, this would be only for high school. We do want a preference and this is outdoors only for the high school campuses. Again, based on community transmission rates, vaccination rates for high school students that are eligible to vaccinate, and number of cases that we're seeing with significant reduction in any secondary transmissions at the, at the high school level. We moved to optional masking outdoors for students during the school day. Student athletes on sidelines or students who are participating in close proximity to other students on the sidelines for extracurricular activities continue to mask. The reason we're continuing to mask for these individuals is a couple of things. One, they're competing with and going to communities that may or may not have the same community transmission, vaccination rates or requirements for their individuals in attendance or their players or athletes on the field of play. And we also want to make sure that as they're coming off the field, they're still protecting themselves and the other individuals around them. So at this time, we're recommending those masking requirements on the sidelines continue. And we'll be reviewing that again in two weeks based on the, the data and the, and the recommendations at that point in time. So I did want to be clear about why we were continuing the sideline masking for the student athletes, especially as we have students competing in high risk sports and athletic events. No physical distancing required outdoors. Again, we recommend three feet. So we'll be consistent with students. They do have the ability to be closer. But it is recommended at least continuing three feet. Students would be allowed to talk when eating or mask outdoors when they're close proximity to other students. Again, it would be optional. And then for our staff, because they are working. And then for our staff, because they are working with, um, on a daily basis, a population that has had, um, for quite some time now, the eligibility for vaccinations. They would continue with optional masking outdoors. And again, that would be for high school staff only. Just as you heard earlier, you know, some of our high school staff members, I mean, they report before 8:00 AM. And there's events at the school campus up until 11:00 or 12:00 PM at night and they're masked the entire day and the entire time indoors and outdoors. And so we would, um, allow them optional masking outdoors. Questions or comments about those recommendations? And we would revisit this on November 8th. We'll be highly tracking the data and reviewing, um, cases and case counts. I can tell you for our student athletes, um, we are right at, um, just under 80%. Um, we're right at 80% for our high school student athletes with vaccinations. So we're down to only 70-some athletes who are not fully vaccinated. So when we talked about managing testing strategies and mitigator, mitigation strategies for athletes, we were looking at 500 athletes, um, back at the, um, end of August, first of September. We, we now have 80% of our athletes fully vaccinated. And so we're, we're down to 70-some that we would now be moving into the testing phase and we would be working with. Although we do know our, um, winter indoor sports will be, uh, taking place. And so with basketball and other sports, um, it's going to be very important that we continue mitigation strategies and indoor strategies as well.
Any burning questions before the vote? Dr. Felder?
No, I just wanted to, um, thank, uh, Mr. Ably for sharing, but also just to, um, remind the board that again, the ABC Science Collaborative and the Orange County Health Department, uh, stand behind these recommendations. So, uh, again, they were done in collaboration with our health and, uh, medical partners. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Ms. Miley?
Um, thank you very much. Um, and thank you for the thoughtful recommendations. Just making sure I understand the implications of this. A vaccinated student does not have to quarantine if they were under these conditions with a student who tests positive. Is that correct? So if I'm sitting at the lunch table outdoors with somebody who gets COVID, but I'm vaccinated, I don't need to quarantine. Is that right?
Again, uh, the quarantine requirements have not changed, um, based on this. They're still in an unmasked situation. That's one of, um, the issues we have now with students that while they're eating lunch, if there's close contacts or positive cases, they're unmasked during that period of time. And we, we would still be following that in this situation or scenario. I don't know if Ms. Stort's still on the line and, oh, there she is. Okay. So Ms. Stort, do you want to, thank you if you want to answer the vaccine or the quarantine question.
Sure. No problem. Um, so Ms. Miley is correct. If you have a student that is fully vaccinated and they are exposed or in close contact to someone, to someone who tests positive, they do not have to quarantine as long as they remain asymptomatic. If they start to exhibit symptoms, then yes, they're pulled out and they need to, um, isolate.
Awesome. Thank you. That's helpful.
Ms. Doyle?
Um, I, I just think this has been a really thoughtful process, and I think we've handled this in a really smart way. And I thank you for your leadership, Mr. Ably. And I think we should feel really good that we haven't had, um, you know, severe illness and, and very little illness because we've been thoughtful and, um, at the risk averse end of the spectrum. And I think this is a really appropriate time to, um, remove outdoor masking, um, requirements at the high school tier. And it sets us up to give a, a trial frankly, um, before our younger grades, um, have the opportunity to va, uh, to vaccinate. It's, it lets us know if we can handle this or not. And again, I just want to emphasize the need for really clear communication. You know, simple as well as thorough because our, if you get it all in there, there's so much information. It's hard to take it all in as a parent. So just the simple that, you know, if you, if it's another encouragement to vaccinate. So that if I let my, my kids enjoy, um, these freedoms, then they don't have to worry about quarantining. So I think one more push to vaccinate with that communication would be great. But I'm happy to, um, move that we adopt these recommendations.
Um, we have a motion from Ms. Doyle. Is there a second? And then I see your hand, Ms. Hauser, and I'll call on you before.
I'll second the motion, but I, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Okay. Um, is there any discussion before I call the vote?
Yes. So I, I'd just like to ha, request a friendly amendment that we talked about for, um, adding with staff flexibility for state playoffs, if we could add that.
I would be, can, can we say for outdoor flexibility for concessions? Okay.
We're okay with that.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Sure.
Um, okay. Any more discussion before I call the vote? Ms. Hauser, go ahead.
I have a question, but it, we could do the vote. It's not unrelated to the vote. So.
Well, go ahead. Go ahead.
Now, I just wanted, wanted a question. I, I like this as a start. We have many families that are really anxious about getting those masks outdoors off at all ages. And I'm just curious if we can give them a preview of how we're going to be evaluating this and when we might, um, we can't predict, there's no crystal balls. We can't predict the future. I'm just curious of, as to how we're looking at this and when we're going to be taking more steps.
So we're, we'll be looking at it every two weeks as we have been continually at all, at all levels. I would say this evening, there are three key things that, that we're looking at. One is the community transmission rates, the vaccination rates, um, and the case counts. Right now, um, our students up through age 11 are not eligible for vaccinations. And so that certainly has played into, um, this, the decision not to, to only include high school at this point in time. And I would say the same with the other two things that I mentioned. You know, reviewing case counts and other information. Um, and I'll leave that there unless Dr. Felder has anything else to add. But those would be the three main things we would be reviewing. And then certainly coordinating, um, collaborating with the ABC Science Collaborative and the Orange County Health Director.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ably. And, um, I also really appreciate these thoughtful recommendations and careful steps down. I know that we're all excited to do that as we are able to safely. Um, I also just want to thank Ms. Stewart, who I think is still on the call. And just say thank you also so much for your partnership and continued support and being in these meetings. Um, I know it's a heavy lift to do this for, for us and we are very grateful to you. Um, and with that, I'm going to call the vote. So, um, are we all clear on the motion? Good? Okay. Then I vote yes. Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Absolutely.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Enjoy your lunchtime tomorrow, high schoolers. Okay. With that, thank you everyone. I'm sorry, Mr. Ably.
I, there, there were still some items on the health and safety recommendations I needed to cover very quickly. These are, uh, non-voting.
I apologize. I thought this was the last one.
Um, it, it is, but we, we skipped a few items. So I just, uh, wanted to give the board an update, um, on the wind instruments and the chorus performing arts. We limited playtime substantially at the beginning of the school year. Talked about starting out very stringent in requirements and recommendations. We loosened those on September 27th, moving to 40 minutes per hour playtime or singing time. At this point in time, as we said, on September 27th, we'd be monitoring cases through October 15th. And so we'll be moving forward with the recommendation of a 50 minutes, uh, playtime per hour, 10-minute break. Um, and then that would also factor into, um, 60 minutes, 20-minute, 10 rest periods at the high school level, um, as well. That follows some of the national best practices we're seeing and what neighboring school districts have adopted too. But again, um, not having seen any secondary transmissions in those programs or areas, we feel comfortable making the recommendations, um, that we'll be moving forward with and just wanted to inform the board. The next is, uh, student vaccinations ages five to 11. We're already poised and ready. We've already reached out to the, um, vendors who would be co- coordinating, um, large-scale vaccination events. So not only with vaccinations that may be available within the community. We do want to host vaccination, um, sites at our elementary schools. We not necessarily will be able to do all elementary schools simultaneously. But our goal would be to crisscross the, the community, um, both where there's the high needs, um, and love, physical distancing and geographically, um, where we may not have other health provided, um, clinics or pop-up clinics be able to put, um, vaccination clinics on our campus. They would be held after hours. We are looking at a plan that may be able to provide bus assistance to parents, um, needing to come out and bring their student out to get vaccinated. But because of the age of the students and the requirement of families or, uh, parents to be with their child after they're vaccinated, we, we are requesting, um, that that be completed at night. And we'll keep the board and the community updated. So as soon as authorization's given, the, the vendor is available and the vaccinations start to flow. We are first on the list right now to get vaccinations in November with the goal that all of our elementary students will have the opportunity to be vaccinated before the winter break in December. Tents and shade, shade structures, I gave you an update. We did have a couple of vendor issues, um, with securing materials and, uh, purchase authorizations. Not as any fault of the school district. We have sought alternative, um, methods, uh, for more pet, permanent, uh, shade structures. Uh, we met with one vendor, uh, the past couple of weeks. We also were looking at leasing and then we also authorized, um, today additional shade structures to be purchased through another source. And so just wanted to update you that we are continuing to work on, um, providing as much shade, permanent and temporary on school campuses as we can. And, um, we've already talked about the fire ants and pest control measures. So that information's there. And I just wanted to mention quickly because I skipped over custodial services. We are not having at this time any supply shortages as far as soap, paper towels, toilet paper. Yes, there were some shortages, um, within the schools in September as the TikTok challenge ran, um, nationally and globally with the destruction of, um, those types of products in restrooms. Um, and so we were limiting stock and reducing the supplies, um, so that it was controlled by the, um, custodians, um, the amount going into the restrooms. But we are fully stocked and have our warehouses resupplied. Certainly we're using a high amount of product this year compared to last year. But that's, um, there's a few factors for that. One, everybody's back in school. And two, we're washing hands, washing hands, washing hands, as you heard the health director remind us again today. And so we'll continue to use products again as a reminder. Um, and we'll let, uh, students know as well, if they're ever in a restroom and there's products not there as they expect, then just let the custodian know or someone, their teacher or the front office staff, and we will get those, um, immediately supplied. But there's no, um, community need to donate or, uh, needed supplies. We're able to find all of our PPE and all of our required supplies through our normal sources. Thank you. Those are my updates this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ably. And then I'm going to let Dr. Felder jump in with one, um, quick update after my excited comment saying, enjoy lunch tomorrow.
Enjoy lunch on Wednesday, um, as we just need a day, uh, to communicate, right? So we need to ensure our principals are clear, staff are clear, students and families. And so students at the high school level, you'll be able to engage in the new, uh, revised mitigated, mitigation strategies on Wednesday. Not tomorrow. So hold tight. It's coming. All right.
Thanks, Dr. Felder. All right. Thank you again, Mr. Ably. Um, our next item is our finance audit report, and we will welcome Ms. Rath to present that for us.
Yes. Hi. Good evening. North Carolina general statute requires that local governments, um, and public school units have their books audited annually by a certified public accountant. We have with us this evening, um, Mr. Dale Smith, who is a partner with Anderson, Anderson Smith &amp; White, who, uh, performed our external audit this year for the time period that ended on June the 30th of 2021. He will be speaking this evening from the, um, final audit report that is attached to the item in the agenda entitled Finance Audit Report. There's an attachment there that is our final audit that he will be speaking to. And I'm now going to turn this over to Dale. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Felder. Hope all of you are doing well.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good. Uh, thank each of you, as Rhonda said, should have already received an electronic, uh, PDF copy of the financial statements. And hopefully you've had plenty of time to, uh, to look over them. And, uh, and, and, you know, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me at any time. It's a fairly lengthy report, so I'm going to, uh, try to focus on the few pages from the report that I think are of the most importance to you all in managing and overseeing the finances of the district. The audit actually covers two primary areas. We perform an audit of the actual finances of the district, which includes the dollar amounts and numbers and amounts that you see in the report. And then we also perform what we call a compliance audit. And the financial section of the audit, uh, covers the first 61 pages of the report. And the compliance section, uh, covers pages 62 through 73. And for the financial section, um, we audit, again, we audit the finances of the district, again, the amounts and disclosures in the report. And some of the procedures performed include random testing, uh, selection of payroll transactions, general dispersment transactions, uh, confirming the significant revenue sources that flow through the district. Looking at travel reimbursements and things of that nature, testing account reconciliations, uh, performing various analytical comparisons. And in doing all of that, if there's any unusual, um, uh, transactions or relationships that are discovered, we dig into those areas and, uh, talk to Ms. Rath and her staff. And the whole goal is to come to the conclusion that the financial statements are reasonably stated and can, and can be relied upon. And on pages one and two of the report is our audit opinion letter that addresses the, uh, finances of the district. And we're happy to report that it is a clean, unmodified opinion, uh, which means we do feel that the financial information in the report is reliable and free from any sort of material misstatement. And as I mentioned earlier, the compliance section starts on page 62 of the report. And on page 62 is the first of three letters that we issue that relate to the various, uh, detailed testing that we're required to perform, uh, related to internal controls of the district and controls and procedures over the compliance, uh, over the state and federal dollars flowing through the district. We were, uh, required to perform more extensive compliance testing this past year because of all of the federal, uh, COVID dollars that flowed through the, uh, the district. But we're happy to report that all three of these letters are also clean, unmodified reports. And basically these letters let you know that we didn't note any improper use of grant funds. And from what we could tell, it appears that the monies were spent, uh, in accordance with the budgets that were adopted by the Board of Education. So all four of these letters collectively are as clean a reports as a school system can receive in its, uh, external financial audit. And again, there's going to be a few pages that we go over in the report. So if you want to, let's go over to page 12 to start with, and we will look at the, um, um, general fund of the district. And page 12 was a snapshot of where the district, uh, stood financially as of June 30th, 2021. And the first column on page 12 is your general fund. And looking at the top, the district had total assets in the general fund of $9,022,0291 as of June 30th. And this amount was composed primarily of cash and cash equivalents, which totaled $8,973,253. And in the middle of the page, the district had liabilities of $2,408,187. And if you take your total assets less liabilities, you get the district's fund balance as of June 30th, which was $6,614,104. And that is the next to last number that you see there in that first column. And of that amount, you had unassigned fund balance of $3,854,071. That's the number right above, uh, the total fund balance. Okay. And this amount actually represents an increase over the prior year of about $490,000. And due to COVID-19 and most students. And due to COVID-19 and most students not being in the classroom for most of the year, the district was able to generate savings in some operational areas last year. And in addition, the district was able to use federal COVID relief funds to help cover expenses for those operational areas where costs actually increased for the district. So these two factors combined are primarily what enabled the district to increase its fund balance last year. And most of the districts that we've audited so far this year have seen their local fund balances increase for these exact same reasons. And from what we've seen, costs seem to be rising in pretty much all areas for school systems right now. Health insurance, retirement contribution rates, fuel costs, utility costs, all of those are rising fairly rapidly. And we feel as though all of these costs are going to weigh more heavily on school systems once these federal COVID relief funds expire in a few years. So we feel that having extra fund balance reserves and trying to build those up right now is actually a wise budgeting strategy, you know, given the current economic environment that the district is operating in. Anyone have any questions relating to the general fund?
Mr. Atherton?
Just one quick one. I did notice the bank overdraft that's from the state. Could you say what that is?
Yeah, the the state account, the way that account operates, like for payroll, for example, when state employees are paid, monies have to be sent over to the local account from the state account to cover the payroll for that month. Well, the monies have to be sent well in advance of, well, I say well in advance, just say a few days in advance of of month end. So as payroll is being finalized for the month, you may have transactions that have to be voided for whatever reason as payrolls being fully finalized. And when that happens, you'll end up with local, your local fund will end up having the cash that belongs to the state account. So whenever year end rolls around, there's always going to be items such as that that typically will have to be paid back to state the next month. So we see this at every district we go to pretty much. So it's nothing, nothing unusual.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, I was going to read across on that total fund balance line and just point out what the other ending fund balances were in the other funds of the district. Your state public school fund has an ending fund balance of zero. And in that fund, all of the amounts that you receive each year are required to be expended. So it's perfectly normal for the state public school fund to show a zero fund balance. Your other special revenue fund had an ending fund balance of $4,201,596. And this fund is used to account mostly for the revenues of various grants and programs that the district has, such as Medicaid, NC pre-K, and health and safety reimbursements from the county also flow through this fund. Capital outlay fund had an ending fund balance of $1,747,506. And all of that amount is restricted for capital outlay purposes. And the the final column there labeled special revenue has an ending fund balance of $796,872. And that column is a combination of the federal grants fund and the individual schools fund. And all of that fund balance, the full $796,872, represents the fund balance of the individual schools of the district combined. It's basically the cash balances of every individual school pulled together as of June 30th. So again, I think the district is in good financial shape, good fund balance levels in these funds as of June 30th. Any questions before we look at the child nutrition program?
I don't see any.
Okay, all right, let's go over to page 60, and we'll look at the school food service program. Give everyone a moment to find that page. And page 60 shows the revenues and the expenditures of the school food service program for the year ended June 30th, 2021. And if you look about three quarters of the way down on this page, you'll see it's the last line that has three columns, the net change in fund balance line. And we'll be looking at the middle column, which is your actual results for the year. And this program had a net increase in fund balance of $507,251 last year. And in the previous year, the program reported a profit of approximately $20,000. And as will be expected with the remote learning environment last year, food sales declined significantly, $569,000. And that's the top number that you see in that on this page in the middle there. I think $5,816 is all that came in last year compared to $574,000 in the previous year. But one big change last year was that due to the pandemic, the federal government allowed all students of the district to receive free breakfast and lunch all year. So the child nutrition program was able to significantly increase revenues from USDA reimbursements by utilizing various methods to deliver meals to students throughout the district. And what you ended up with was a significant increase in federal reimbursements and grants last year. I think that revenue there, it's under nonoperating revenues. You got a line that's titled federal reimbursements and grants. You can see it had $3,594,002. That number is about 1.7 million higher than the previous year. And that was the primary factor that allowed the program to to end up with a net change in fund balance of $507,000, whereas it was only about $20,000 the previous year. And hopefully with students back in school in the current year, the program should see a significant increase in that top line that we were talking about, the revenue from food sales as supplemental sales should increase significantly. And cash balances in the program were approximately $1.1 million as of June 30th, 2021. And this $1.1 million of cash balance approximates what your ending fund balance would be in the child nutrition fund as of 6/30/2020. So again, I think overall, this program appears to be operating very soundly and is in good financial condition. Anyone have any other questions? Yep.
Mr. Atherton and Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, my question may actually be for Rhonda. But for the donated commodities, could you give some examples of what that is?
It is food that the USDA gives to school systems across the state. There is, it's actual, it's not dollars that the district gets. It's actual food that is delivered to the district. And every LEA in the state gets these free commodities. And there's a value assigned to them, and we book a revenue and a corresponding expense for that dollar amount.
Okay, so this is showing that we received it in that amount of value. Is that what that means?
That's exactly right. So you've got, if you're looking under the nonoperating revenues, you see that $176,743, that's your revenue. Then look up under expenses, you're going to see that same exact dollar amount as donated commodities expense.
Okay, I see it. Okay, so it zeros out.
It zeros out. It sure does.
Okay, thank you for that.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, I'm just to give you a little context. As you know, the whole nation is having difficulty with the food supply chain for schools. And we're running short. We may need to find some alternative sources and spend some money. I don't have any context in terms of dollars. I'm ready. My question is the fund balance, is there any reason for us to have a fund balance for food services? If we could, if we spend that down to zero, is there any risk that that creates?
Well, you really need to have some fund balance just in order to to make cash flow for paying your bills of the program. So if 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 the program went down to zero, then basically the general fund would have to loan money to the child nutrition program so that it would have money to operate. So it's it's good, it's good to have some cash in the program. Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I am not seeing any.
All right, got one more page I was going to look at with y'all. So if you'll turn over to page 61, we'll look at the childcare fund. Not a lot of activity last year, but and it's set up similar to the last page. If you look at the the line that says net change in fund balance, last line with three columns to it, the program reported a loss for the year of $261,871. And as will be expected with the remote learning environment, revenues declined significantly. I think revenues were down about $662,000 last year, simply because there were no students that needed to be watched. Program expenses charged to this fund declined by $365,000 last year, which helped to offset some of the decline in revenues. Cash balances in the program were down to $279,000 at year end. That's a decline of about $261,000 for the year. And this $279,000 of cash balance pretty much approximates what fund balance in the childcare fund is as of June 30th, 2021. And as with the school food service program, hopefully with the students back in school, revenues are going to see a significant increase in the childcare program for the current year. And hopefully it'll it'll get back to at least a break even status, which is where it pretty much was for the several years leading up to to this unique year. Anyone have any questions on the childcare program?
Mr. Atherton?
So I believe last year, this fund was used to fund the learning labs. Isn't that correct? So that's why there's a larger expense in there than we would expect.
That is part of it, Mr. Atherton. You are correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Hauser?
I have a really crazy question. The the report is issued to the Orange County Board of Education rather than to Orange County schools. And I was curious why that is.
Yeah, it's to you all as the Board of Education. Y'all are responsible for overseeing the finances of the of the district, approving the budgets and, you know, making sure that everything's done properly. So that's why the report that we issue is 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 to the Board of Education.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Smith. We really appreciate you being here and walking us through this.
Okay, well, again, I think everything from an audit standpoint went very smoothly. And I think the board is in sound financial condition as of June 30th. And I would like to thank Ms. Rath and her staff for the great job they do. Y'all really do have a very well-run finance department. We we ask a lot of them, and they are always able to give us everything we need. The finances of the district are very transparent. If we ask for anything, they're able to give us proper backup documentation. And again, you know, we were very pleased with what we saw from an audit standpoint.
And Ms. Rath, we thank you very much for that as well. It's needless to say, it is very important, and you always do a stellar job. So I'm going to give you a round of applause.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Dr. Felder, we can get ready to jump in?
I just have to, I just have to. First, I want to thank Mr. Smith and just say we appreciate you being with us tonight and appreciate your report. But I too would just like to take this opportunity to publicly laud Mrs. Rath, our chief finance officer and her team for their expertise, hard work, exceptional work ethic, commitment to the district's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year that ended on June 30th, 2020. Boy, you know this, but the public may not. That report qualifies the district for the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition. Again, the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. So just way to go. Kudos. Thank you to Ms. Rath and her team. We so appreciate them. So thank you again.
On behalf of the team, thank you, everyone.
Y'all make us very, very proud.
Indeed.
Thank you, Ms. Rath.
All right. Thanks again, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, y'all. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye-bye. All right. Next item on our agenda is the request for a dean of students at Eflin Cheeks Global. And I'm just going to let everybody know that after this item, I am going to call a brief recess so we cannot stretch our legs for a moment.
Well, thank you so much, Chair McKenzie. I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Hatcher, our chief of human capital and organizational development, just a moment. But I I just want to begin by saying that, reminding everyone that goal two of our new strategic plan, which is excellence and efficiency, states that the district will provide exemplary operational support to schools, staff and community to ensure a focus on student learning. As you know, each goal, and therefore, has an equity emphasis. The equity emphasis for this goal is to ensure equitable distribution of human, fiscal and capital resources across Orange County schools. So the request that you're about to get more information about, a request for a new position, a dean of students position for Eflin Cheeks Global Elementary School, is an example of equitable distribution of resources to our schools. In an equal distribution model, every school would receive the same thing, the same resources, regardless of need. And in equitable model of distribution of resources, it's based on need. So this request is from the school's principal, the new principal, Mrs. Kelly Parks, and is deemed equitable to meet the needs of students at the school. So at this time, I invite Mrs. Joyce Hatcher, again, chief of human capital and organizational development, to provide additional information. And I also ask that the school's principal, Mrs. Kelly Parks, be elevated to panelist, if she's not already, to just be available to address any questions that are needed. Sue, thank you, and Mrs. Hatcher.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. Good evening, members of the board. I want to just give some insight on the dean of students position. And I do hope that Principal Kelly is on the screen with us so that she can share as well. I want to start by saying that this position, like Dr. Felder has stated, has been requested at the request of the principal. This position is not a school administrative position, but it will work alongside with the school administrators of the building. And has a laser focus and not limited to, first and foremost, improving academic progress of all students, attendance, safety, classroom management, as well as a high academic achievement focus by raising student voice, leadership opportunities and serving as an equity team for the school in addition to developing relationships and fostering parent engagement for that will yield positive student outcomes. This position also will provide wraparound services in the area of social and emotional support for our students at Eflin Cheeks Global Elementary School. I do hope that Ms. Parks is on the call at this time.
I, I'm here.
She is here?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Kelly, I'm not sure at this point if you want to add additional. She and I did work together on the abstract that you all received. So Kelly, I'm not sure this time if there's anything you want to add as a new principal of Eflin Cheeks Global Elementary School regarding the request that you have made for this new position.
Yes, ma'am. And I do want to add that my experience with Eflin Cheeks is not limited to just the past few weeks there as the principal. I actually began my career within Orange County a few years ago. My my transitioned into Orange County as a teacher at Eflin Cheeks. So I've been a part of the community for multiple years. And I'm grateful to be able to come back and give to, give back to a community that did so much for me as a teacher. And one of the things that has been And one of the things that has been very telling, just in the short amount of time that I have been able to come back to Eflin Cheeks, is the need for this type of role that is, it's, it's a blend of an administrative role, but then also the wraparound services that are focused on the social and emotional needs that we're seeing within our schools. And I say schools generally because that includes our staff and our students. So my vision for this role is that it is a student-facing role. Just like Ms. Hatcher shared, she and I collaborated on, on the abstract for this role. And I do genuinely believe that this is something that would have immediate benefits and also long-term benefits as we continue to support our teachers in this respect. And that will extend into their classrooms, but then this role would also exist as a student-facing role.
Well, I just want to say, first of all, congratulations, Ms. Parks. We are excited to have you here as the principal. And I'm excited to talk about this position tonight. Any other comments, questions, Ms. Miley?
Well, I'm really excited to see this position come forward. And it's the kind of support that I can imagine our school's really needing right now. I just had a question about the, the financial side of that actually, which is that it'll be funded from lapsed salaries from existing vacant positions. So this might be a question for Ms. Rath, actually. Is that sort of the one-year approach to funding the role? Or is this, is that, are, are those vacant positions, positions we're just not going to fill? And so we expect that funding to be in place for longer term?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Miley. I appreciate you asking the question. That is a, a one-year approach. You know, we don't like to place anything in the budget on lapsed salaries for a recurring item. But typically, there are always lapsed salaries, as you know, we are never 100% of our staff at any time. But yes, that is the first-year approach to this.
Can I ask, Ms. Rath, sometimes we fund salaries from title funding. Is that true?
That is true. It is.
Are these lapsed title, federal title dollars or local dollars or a mixture? And if you don't have that information right now, that's fine. I guess I'm kind of leading into wondering if we are going to get more recommendations at other Title I schools? And that's the root of my question.
Uh, yeah, no, these are typically from my lens, from the local perspective, from our local dollars.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Parks. This, this looks like really exciting to me. I'm still trying to wrap my head around exactly how it works. And it, it seems like someone who's almost like a liaison and like a bridge builder to make sure the students in particular classes have what they need. And, you know, we did hear from teachers earlier, you know, the different PD they do. And I, I'm excited when I see trauma-informed professional development. And I'm wondering if this person helps target exactly where it's needed? So it's not just like broadly overlaid, you know, the whole staff, but, but can kind of specify what, what PD or what training is needed in different classes? So does this person support teachers in a, in a way as well?
Well, that, that is my vision. Yes, ma'am. I'm hoping, because the administrative role is often very punitive. And so for students and for staff, and then the counseling perspective, we want to maintain that relationship piece that they should have with families while giving them that support. And so this position, I'm seeing very much as a bridge-building position with the differentiation depending on, you know, we've got kiddos that need, we say they have trauma, but trauma can range from, it's very wide-ranging, right? And the same with our staff. They are carrying things into their classrooms that we want to support them with so that they can in turn also support their students.
Miley?
Yeah, just, so just circling back to the funding question. And this is, and, and actually related to the trauma-informed piece that you just mentioned, Ms. Parks. I mean, this is the kind of position that I think I would love to see in our schools longer term. I think our schools have massive need for this kind of thing. And, and so I do worry about funding positions with non-recurring dollars. In general, this is not actually about this question, this particular position. I think it's, yeah. I think it's important for kids to be able to build relationships over years with adults and build that trust. So this might be something, you know, for a budget committee meeting or something. But I would just like to get a sense at this point where we are in the district with how many positions are funded by these shorter-term funding sources? Fund balance, SIR dollars, lapsed salaries? I'd love to get a better understanding of where we stand with that because each position that we create like that creates challenges down the road in terms of being able to sustain it. So I think that's more for Ms. Rath or Ms. Atherton for budget.
Uh, yeah, thank you. And I think that's a great topic for us to discuss in budget committee. So thank you for that suggestion.
Ms. Atherton, I'm sure you'll put that on your list.
It's already on the list. It's already on it. I was going to say, it's on the list of items. We'll just bump it up to be sooner. I just wanted to say, you know, Ms. Parks, thank you so much for bringing this forward. I know us as a board are always asking, hey, what's needed, what's needed? So I appreciate that. The, the question I had is ironically, when I looked through the improvement plan and then I read this, I saw so many intersections on that improvement plan where this person could play a key role. And when you, when you think about your improvement plan, is that how you decided, hey, this was the key element to help these areas be successful? Because some of them really are in the engagement of the student versus, you know, taking a test.
Right. So yes and no. This is a need that we absolutely are finding is critical to our success. And this, this need will be something we're going to push forward, whether this position exists or not. Because this, this is a need in our school. And so that's why it does show up within our school improvement plan. It's going to show up in our classroom planning, in our data analysis. It's going to continue to show up. But this position would serve as an additional layer that we're able to contribute to the success. Because I see this as the foundation of our success because this is the social and emotional aspects. And it includes our families, which is the, the biggest part.
Thank you.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, I couldn't be more excited to see this come forward. So thank you so much for bringing it. I, on this, the funding situation with it, is that going to hamper your ability to fill the position? And do we have to? Is it perceived by someone applying that it is not a funded position?
Kelly, if it's okay, I can, I'll take that. Ms. Hauser, good evening. Thank you for your question. I do not feel as if it will hamper our staff in our recruitment, but I do feel that when we are recruiting and when a person is recommended, we be very transparent about the length of the position. So saying to them, this is a one-year position with the possibility of going further, depending upon funding. It's almost like a grant-funded position or some of our SIR-funded positions that we have. We would need to just be very transparent and tell people upfront. Because the last thing we want to do is recruit them, hire them, and they find out that this is not what I signed up for. So we're being very transparent with the positions and when, and when we're making the offers. And then also too, particularly with this position and with positions that are funded with SIR funds, we are letting folks know on those job postings that these positions are somewhat like grant positions. And they have a, they have a start date and an end date with regard, with regard to the funding.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, Madam Chair, but I'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Parks, Dr. Parks, whichever. And it's good to see that you're getting in there and making a positive difference at Eflin. And, and that means so much. And I've thought about the Thomas Wolfe book. What is it? Says you can't go home again, but not for you, you can go home again. It's great to be back in Eflin, right?
Yes, ma'am, very much. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, do I have a motion for this position?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Miley and a second from Mr. Atherton. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
We have approved this position. Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Parks. Or is it Dr. Parks?
It will be soon. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. And we will see you in a few minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
And with that, I am going to say, what do you guys think? Five minutes, 10 minutes? What do we need? Five? Okay. We'll see you in five minutes. We'll give everybody another minute to trickle back in. I hear storms starting to roll in here. Everybody else hearing that?
Yeah, I was just looking. Sounds like it.
We'll just do our best. Hopefully we'll get through it.
They're absolutely here. You hear it?
Yep.
See it? It's here.
A little bit too.
It's, it's here. My lights have been flickering. We'll see what happens.
We'll just do the best we can.
Yep. All we can do.
Yep. Okay, well, the next item on our agenda is our school improvement plans. Dr. Doyle, you're supposed to be on vacation. I didn't know you would be here tonight.
Well, that she is. And thank you, Mrs. McKenzie. Before I turn things over to Dr. Doyle, well, that just says a lot about who she is and how important tonight's presentations are. And so as you stated, next on tonight's agenda are school improvement plans. Our goal, as noted in Goal One of the strategic plan, is crystal clear. We must, we absolutely must prepare each and every student for lifelong service and success. Our next slide, please. Our new strategic plan outlines the roadmap to keep us on track and to help us achieve this critical goal. And tightly aligned to our strategic plan is each school's school improvement plan. And so while aligned to the district's strategic plan, each school's school improvement plan is differentiated per the data-driven comprehensive needs assessment completed at each school in order to meet the unique and differentiated student needs at their school. So now let's dig into our schools' school improvement plans. And so, Board, as you know, we tried something new this year, something different, to allow for more time for Q and A. The presentation of school improvement plans was submitted via video to the board last week and are posted ensembles and on each school's website for families and the public to review. To provide context for tonight's discussion, we'll begin by reviewing the introduction to the school improvement planning process with Dr. Doyle, our Chief of Schools and Achievement. After reviewing her video, all of our school administrators are here with us tonight to answer questions and provide additional information as needed. We'll begin with administrators at the elementary tier, followed by administrators at the middle school and then high school tiers. And we'll conclude this agenda item with a request to the board to approve our school improvement plan. So before we start the video, I want to take this opportunity to thank all of our school principals for their outstanding job in leading their schools through the data-driven school improvement planning process. That's a mouthful, which represents a lot of work that they certainly put into it and for all of the time they took to prepare and submit their videos. I also
Strategic Plan. All this alignment is going to there's no doubt in my
Thank you so much, Dr. Doyle. And so at this time, Board, we will start with elementary tier, then shift to the middle school tier and then the high school tier. So any questions or discussion points?
Ms. Davidson?
Thank you. I wanted to give a brief reminder that school improvement plans are required by law and they're required to be adopted at least every other year. They have been voted on by the school improvement teams. And so the board by statute is not supposed to make substantive changes to the plans. They can accept, approve them or send them back with specific feedback for the team to try again, but are not supposed to sort of make substantive changes during the meeting.
Thank you. That's a helpful reminder. First of all, just thank you to all of our principals and Dr. Doyle and all of our central office staff that have been and teachers. Because I know that these are plans that have been worked on through the whole organization. So thank you to everyone. It's exciting to see this alignment kind of coming together. Ms. Smiley?
Um, I agree with that. I thought I would share a few things, a few thoughts and then have a question or two. First, though, to the principals, I just want to say first that how much I appreciate your leadership of your schools and your optimism and the way you are driving forward with this belief in all of your students. I appreciate that we recorded these so that we could watch them in advance also to enable more conversation. Otherwise, just the presentations alone take basically entire board meetings. Truly, I appreciate that the core of what every school is focused on is the same and aligned with the district strategic plan. That's going to allow really good opportunity to learn together. And I think that the practice of school improvement is learning together. So excited for that. I was not surprised, but very glad to see that when you were articulating goals, you were specifying increases for each subgroup of students. And wanted to call out, I noticed the trend across a lot of schools where in your strengths were these kudos for student support services. And I think that's really something to celebrate and just really continues to be so, so important. A couple of places where I had additional thoughts. One is around the ambitiousness of the goals. And I think you could really take two views on this. On one hand, you know, as a parent, as a board member, it is really hard to stomach the idea of, you know, half of our students, like the goal being right, that less than half of our students are going to read proficiently in X grade. It's really hard to imagine looking at half of our students and saying, that's okay. That feels really, it feels difficult to say, yes, I approve of this being the goal. On the other hand, I do want to recognize that the sizes of the increases that you have put in here are incredibly ambitious. I looked at the year before COVID, the like seventeen, eighteen to eighteen, nineteen changes in districts. And in the year before COVID, only one district in the state in grades three through eight reading had gains above five percentage points at like the district level, not the school level, right? There were a handful of districts for grades three through eight math. I looked at English two, like there were handfuls of districts that saw like five to 10 percentage points. And so these are really, really, like what you're aspiring to do is to like outperform what the best district in the state did a couple of years ago. And I want you to do that. And also the numbers feel too low. So that it feels very complex. That tension is a reason I think we need meaningful measures for student growth, not EVAAS. But a measure, you know, when our vision is preparing every single learner for a life of service and success, I think we need a measure that speaks to the growth trajectory of our students. So even if the goal is not for a hundred percent of students to pass Math one this year to be proficient in reading, are the students who are behind on a path to get there? I worry about goals that are just about percent proficiency because as a former school improvement team member, I have seen schools discuss bubble kids, right? The kids who are closest to the line that we could push over with some additional support and all the kids at the bottom get missed. And that's not right. It's not right. But you could have lots of kids not miss the bar, but see that they're growing like a year and a half in a year's time. And know that we were on a path for like ninety, ninety-five percent of kids, and that would mean something. So I've talked about it at the past two board meetings. Since all the principals are here, I just wanted to say it again. I just, I think we don't have a measure yet of all students. And then I have one question, which is what are schools' goals for grades K through two? What happens in those grades? It's obviously really huge for the grades above it. And so do schools have goals established this year for grades K through two?
Good evening, Ms. Smiley. I really sincerely appreciate your comments. And I also want to acknowledge the, the public speaker who spoke this evening, who said some similar things. As we tackled this question of where to set the goals this year, we had two kinds of baselines. One is the baseline pre-COVID two thousand eighteen, nineteen. And of course, the next was the baseline of post-COVID twenty twenty-one, where we had proficiencies, but we did not get any growth data from EVAAS specifically. Now, I think there's EVAAS data that's being published or has been published to us. But it was not measured in the same way. And as I shared several meetings ago, the participation rates across the state were very different. And so that created some problems, I think, in calculating the, the way that EVAAS uses to make calculations. To answer the first question or the question that you asked ultimately, the K two question really is being answered at the third grade. However, we are in discussions and have been talking about what measure? And it seems most logical to use the Lexile as a measure, which is a reading performance kind of measure that gives us indications by grade level of where students, of whether students are reading on grade level. One interesting note is that there are average Lexile ranges for each grade, really starting in first grade. It's difficult to measure the Lexile of a kindergarten student. But that start in late first grade. And the state of North Carolina actually has targets that are a little bit higher. And so as we have looked at the targets for, especially what we're looking for in beginning of third grade, that does inform the work that needs to happen in K two. And that is a question worth considering about a specific K two goal tied to Lexile. It's just important that we have a consistent measure that also is predictive of how students will end up performing once they get into third grade, which is really the measure that folks are looking for, not just in the state of North Carolina, but across the board in terms of student readiness and future success. So I hope that gives you an indication of kind of where we are. We are discussing that and thinking about the best possible measure and reporting structure, because we want to make sure that we are not waiting until kids get into third grade before we really know whether they can read at high and proficient levels. But we also want to acknowledge, and I would be remiss if I didn't say this, that the developmental trajectory of students from pre-K to third grade is so different, student to student. And so that's why you see reading begin to be assessed in third grade because assessing it from K to first to second is, is a very difficult comparison even between students because students develop so differently and at such different speeds during that time period. Their brains are developing so quickly.
Other board members? Mr. Atherton, were you raising your hand?
I was. I was just trying to get over to unmute. So I wanted to just plus one on the growth. I completely agree that we need a better measurement, given we know where all our students are. And if we're really going to try to uplift all of our students to get them where they're needed, we've got to have a better measurement. And I wanted to thank the principals, the staff, the schools and the parents that are part of this process too. And the recordings, I think, were fantastic, especially because the community got to see them as well. So it wasn't just, hey, the boards has seen these, you know, videos, but no one else has. But one of the, the questions I have is as I went through all the plans, really liked how everybody was framing up the community engagement, communication paths, you know, all the tiered systems. One of the questions I had is, you know, we know that some of our schools, you know, do have pre-K and some EC inclusion classes. And I'm curious how that fits in to this because there's nothing explicit. I know our pre-K, there's lots of measurements like, are they ready for K? You know, get letters, numbers, you know, all of that. But I'm just curious on the pre-K plus the EC.
Hi, Mr. Atherton and Board. Thank you. I'm going to stay off video because our internet during a storm gets a little wonky. So it's interesting. I'm working, I'm thinking through some pre-K things right as you were speaking. But can you ask the questions again? I just want to make sure I've got the nuances of it.
Yeah, so two different questions. One was, you know, as we think of our improvement plan and we've got, we've got pre-K that's dispersed throughout our systems, you know, are we planning any improvement plans around our pre-K programs? Or measuring, you know, growth within our pre-K programs? And then the second one was more about EC and some of our inclusion classes. And I'll give a great example. One of the things that was introduced, I think, a year and a half ago was Letterland, right? Letterland was put into the classrooms and being taught, which it hadn't been before, which is a huge improvement. But anyway, kind of those kind of thoughts.
Yeah. Yep. So I'm going to probably be a little bit all over the place, but hopefully it will answer your question. So in terms of pre-K, the, the curriculum, so Letterland and Hegarty and Bridges, they are part of the pre-K curriculum, part of the tools that pre-K uses. So that is available. And as, as we are digging in, we are going to be collecting data on the implementation and the outcomes for those, for students, especially with Hegarty, because the phonemic awareness is such a it's a base skill for students in that pre-K and that three, four, five-year-old age range. It is in, being used in our pre-K Title One blended classrooms as well as our EC separate settings. In terms of Letterland, you know, it's, it's kind of exploration at the pre-K level, but it is being implemented so that students who move through pre-K are aware of the language, the sounds, and so they have a base for that when they move into kindergarten. The letters training will not, will be with our pre-K, but per the House bill, it will also need to be implemented with our community partners, our community childcare. And if Ms. Wilson wants to tag onto that. So that is going to be a big lift for the district. But again, it is making sure that our students who are in the community moving into pre-K have that sound basis. So it might not be specifically stated in the, the improvement plans, but we know it's there. And so the work of the teachers and the staff, we know it's embedded in there. In terms of special education with the general education classroom. So right before we went out for, for COVID, we had just implemented corrective reading and number worlds at the elementary levels, corrective reading and trans math at the middle school, and then fusion reading, and then trans math as neat as we can at the high school. And so that is to supplement the good, solid core instruction. So again, as our students with disabilities are exposed to an instruct with again Hegarty, Letterland, the Letterland intervention piece, Bridges, the Bridges intervention. All of those pieces go into building a sound core curriculum for our students with disabilities. And then the specialized programs that we purchased through our EC funding and have provided PD for our teachers serve as their direct instruction intervention. And that goes for Hill Rap as too. Two, we have Hill Rap trained teachers who are special education teachers as well as our general education teachers. In terms of being in the school improvement plan, students with disabilities within the, well, all students with disabilities are part of the school improvement plan. So we need to make sure that they are highlighted and we are tracking their growth as we would any other subgroup within the schools. So I hope that answered your question.
It does. I mean, it gives a little more specifics around what's being done. And, you know, those are just so important for feeding into our, our schools and also, you know, our EZ population, like you said, between general education and inclusion classes. But thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ms. Hauser?
So I want to just add in my thanks to Dr. Doyle and our principals for pulling together so much important information for us. For me, this is just such a vast improvement over part plans the district has done. The alignment really helped me to just kind of see all this information in a structure that made sense. And frankly, I appreciated the candor that the principals presented data with and the challenges and the, and the opportunities that are facing schools. And honestly, despite the standard structure, you know, I was delighted by how unique each school is and each principal is in their view of their schools. That said, the numbers are sobering and I really appreciate the schools. It wasn't in all the plans. I hope they'll be in all the plans eventually, but the schools that disaggregated by group and that also showed us where we were two years ago versus where we are now to see what, you know, and where we were, I would think of as a highly, high disparities, free equity, if you will, kind of numbers. And they're much worse now. And it's hard for me to understand how it's going to take us years to get back to where we were. Now, I did notice that the teachers, that, I'm sorry, the principals did a really interesting job in doing the planning of their growth. Some did a standard like ten percent for each group. Others decided to group to grow their more vulnerable groups more than the others. So I really appreciated that sensitivity. The challenge is daunting and I'm with Sarah on that, that it's like, how, you know, you want more and then you see the numbers and you go, how, how much more can you get? And all that said, I am going to plus two on the growth. I don't believe, and I'm a little worried. I don't believe, and I'm a little worried, you know, I don't know, you know, so I'm plus two on the growth. And my first question is, how are we going to monitor the progress on these plans for the public and the board? We don't want to micromanage you. We don't want to tell you what to do. But once in a while, we need to know how, how we're making progress. And to this K2 question, we can't wait till third grade to see how our, the progress that our K2s are making. So, so just as a question about how are we planning to monitor progress? I love the community and family engagement measures. And of course, we have really powerful tools like Power, like Power School and Pless Dote and others. I have an ongoing question about equity in engagement and that we engage people that have access to computers and access to email and access to resources, and not all our families do that. So I wondered if there's a metric that can be included that shows the improvements that we're making in family access to communications from the school. So it's not just what we're saying, but who's getting it and is it being, or are they getting it equitably? And then the third thing is, of course, we all know, and the principals were pretty candid about it, some schools, not all our schools, have substantial staff shortages and high absentee rates. And that adds to the challenges of advancing these plans. So how has that been factored into the goals and how will that affect the goals? On, on the student achievement in particular, obviously long challenges, want to hear how, how you're going to be measuring it. Recovery is going to be a long road. Okay, I got it. But how do we work within your framework to create, to implement more urgent and intensive interventions, especially for our young and most vulnerable students, the K2 groups? So how can we add that in? Because it seems to be such a sensitive time and, and I don't know, you know, I don't know that we can wait for third grade measures to hear that. And finally, now that the principals have developed their plans, they've signed off on it, is there a time when our board, Dr. Felder, the districts, and the rest of the district sign up to be held accountable for the same metrics so that we're all on the same page and working together to the same goal? So I just wondered if we get together on this really big step that you've taken. So thank you. Those are my questions. Don't need answers for them today. They're just to help move it, how I like to see it move forward. But thank you so much for this work.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser. Ms. Doyle?
Okay, just, just quickly, I'm going to turn off my video, too. I really appreciate the presentation, Dr. Doyle, and I've loved seeing the alignment develop, and I appreciate your presentation of how that all has worked over the past months. And I just want to echo the comment about, I think it was often referred to as like the stakeholder engagement in the different school improvement plans. And I'm trusting and assuming, because I know that we have this mindset as a district, that when you're talking about certain groups, it's really helpful to get feedback from specific communities on how to close those gaps. And so I'm assuming that there's going to be some, kind of to Bonnie's point, targeting of stakeholders to get feedbacks from specific communities of what they need for their students to thrive in our schools.
I'm going to defer, not defer, but I'm going to turn it to Ms. Stowe, who is working on Goal Four at the district level, to talk a little bit about that. And I'm happy to add on.
Then if we could also perhaps allow some of our principals to speak to the progress monitoring, I can tell you there are assessments such as Dibbles and Ames Webb, but perhaps they can nuance that a little bit more.
Yeah, yes. Good evening. I'll just real quickly update with regards to Ms. Doyle and Ms. Hauser's comments. We are in the middle right now, as has been updated to you, of a process of literally one by one contacting our families to ensure we have the appropriate communication methods they prefer. This includes text messaging, and we have 2,597 families signed up for that. We have a ways to go. We have families that just want mail. They want it hard copy. That's how they want it. And so we, we will provide families with the information they need in the manner of which they are requesting it. The other question is Doyle, with regards to our subgroups. Our strategic plan and our equity plan are very strategic in that we're focusing on all students, and then we're honing in on subgroups that are underperforming all students. And so in order to, to make the gains, the significant gains that we need to make, we have to, and will continue to have, regular focus groups with those subgroups and families and community partners, as we've been doing, and will continue to do that so that, so that we can embrace families in that process. And that is part of school improvement planning and school improvement plans.
Any other questions? Did principals want to speak to that? What Dr. Felder was requesting?
Hey, this is Chris Marks, Principal Grady Brown. I don't mind speaking that a little bit, as some of my colleagues might be able to speak a little more eloquently about the data that we kind of maintain, monitor and track in our buildings. But there is vast amounts of data that we can look at, and we have been working pretty closely with Dr. Doyle to hone in on what's going to be our best data to zero in on as we track those students, not only in K2, but also in 3-5. We have regular check-ins. We have informal assessments in the classroom. We have in-class data, as Dr. Felder said, we have Ames Webb. You know, that we have just gobs of information that we can use to pinpoint specific students in those subgroups that we can, you know, use as our driving force for improvement. So, you know, there are ways, even at my, even my level, at the principal level, looking at the big picture, I keep a spreadsheet of data that kind of keeps track of all of our students in our building. And then teachers have, you know, some specific ways that they keep track of their students that we can always kind of look at. So there's all kinds of data out there that we're able to monitor and track in the building. So that might give a little insight. Like I said, some of my colleagues might be able to, you know, say that a little bit better than I did.
You did a great job, Chris. Thank you.
Good job.
Can I just add something here to the Bonnie's question about monitoring this at the board level, too, which is just to let everyone know that in our Student Achievement Committee meeting in November, one of the things on the agenda is looking at, I believe, a draft of a data dashboard, along with the sort of planned cadence of when aligned with, keyword alignment, like aligned with when schools and the district are reviewing their data and going through those cycles of reflection, that like, where are the right points for the board then to look at the same thing and like hear what they're learning and where they're going? So more to come in like a week.
Great. I'm excited about that meeting. All right. Any other questions for our elementary principals? Well, thank y'all so much for being here tonight. We appreciate all of your efforts in this and also for being here so late this evening. So thanks again. And at this time, we will welcome our secondary principals. Have a moment to switch over. Dr. Doyle and Dr. Felder, should we just go ahead and welcome all of our secondary, the high schools and middle schools? I was assuming that would be kind of the easiest.
I agree. Yes, that works. Thank you.
See, Mr. Farrington, is there? Hello, everyone. We go. Welcome all. Thank you for being here. Dr. Felder, Dr. Doyle, was there anything that we wanted to add before we opened the floor to the board?
I don't have anything to add. I'm fine with opening the floor, unless, Dr. Doyle, you have something to add at this time.
Very good. Well, thank you to all of you as well. Appreciate you being here tonight. Board members? Ms. Hauser?
Math. I don't even know how to ask the question. Math, anyone? I'd love to hear how you all are feeling about math.
Maybe you want to give them a little more information to work with?
Well, it's really challenging. I mean, the school improvement plans, I, you know, I'm pretty tenacious, but I almost was ready to give up when I was reading about math. And so I'm just curious how the principals are feeling about their goals, what we can do to make it, to help, how, you know, do they have, you know, how are they doing in terms of bringing on the staff to make it happen? Is this doable? Is this, is this, that's all.
Principals, I'm afraid to just jump on in.
Ms. Hauser, to answer your question, how, how we feel? I'm not sure I can speak for the whole group, but nervous, scared, feeling like we don't have enough time to dissect the data that we need to, that we need to in order to drive instruction, because we already know that our kids, whether they come in from the middle school or they were here at the high school level last year, we already know that they're behind. And our teachers are working really, really hard to catch them up. But the biggest issue is around time, because you know, when you have a math teacher who is giving all they have in a class to catch students up, but then they got to go cover another class, you know, where is that planning time for them? So nervous and scared to answer your question.
Is there something, I'm not, you know, this is like way below where I don't belong, but is there anything that could be done to protect the math teachers and say, they never cover, they always stay in class, and we'll do, you know, so, and we're going to find some other way to cover and just keep them really precious? And of course, everybody's pressures, I don't mean.
Maybe we can make that a rhetorical question and let administrators think on that. I appreciate it and know that we do need to protect instructional time for sure, instructors' times. Other board members?
Ms. McKenzie?
Smiley? Yeah, yes. Hey, Dr. Johnson.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. And I just do want to commend the principals, because even though the district initiative is focused heavily on literacy, all of the principals have ensured, as you noticed in their school improvement plans, that they do also have goals for their mathematics, right? And so while the district focuses on literacy, we have given more autonomy to the teachers and the schools as they have continued to develop their school improvement plan, identify what are their needs for their students, but also that of the needs of the teachers. And if there are certain resources, certain interventions that they feel that they would like to pilot or try, we are supporting them in that. And part of, and again, just, I just want to show our gratitude to Ms. Parker, who as our new K through 12 math facilitator, has done an excellent job in making sure that she's providing the support to the math teachers to listen to their needs and then also provide the guidance that they are asking for. And part of this morning's two-hour professional development was to give our math teachers access and opportunities to get some training around some of the math resources that they were asking about. So there is a focus on mathematics, and that is in large part to the principals' focus on mathematics, even though the district is saying we're heavily focused on literacy, because we do know the importance of mathematics. I, as a former math teacher, could not let math go without, you know, that type of focus, because we know the value of that level of critical thinking that comes with math instruction. So I do want to commend the principals for that. And yes, Mr. Johnson, it can be daunting at times, but we know, and our teachers have shown under the leadership, instructional leaders of our school leaders, that our teachers are doing the work. They are really striving to differentiate the level of instruction and support and the tiered supports that our students need, not only in literacy, but also in mathematics. And we just had, I actually have an opportunity to engage with math teachers today in that exact conversation. So please know, Ms. Hauser, we are as committed to mathematics as we are literacy.
Ms. Hauser?
I thank you for your comments, Dr. Dawson. And I just have to say, there's no question about the commitment, and you can see that in the work and these plans that have been put together. And I just, I just have to thank Mr. Johnson, because it's really brave for him to share candidly how it feels in the building. And so, so that's, and I heard that from some of the other plans. And, and Dr. Felder, how do you, what is the James Baldwin quote that you use all the time that we can't solve? It's essentially, we can't solve the problem until we acknowledge it. And so I just, we need, so, so, so we just need the candor, because this is a really challenging times, and I just want to, Mr. Johnson, you, the other principals, we really appreciate the challenge that you are dealing with. And I think every, I can't speak for the board, but I bet that every single one of us will do any, whatever we take from our side to help you get through this. So I'm doing car ride of line, whatever. You could say, Bonnie, I want you to come in and do the data handling for us and do all, you know, you can give me a grunt job, I don't care. So just tell us what you need. So thank you for that.
Ms. Smiley?
Yeah, the point I was going to make is, it goes very well with what Bonnie was just saying, which is just to thank all of the principals for all of the work I know you're doing to fully staff your teams and really go out and find the candidates for the positions that you know you need. I know that, you know, when I think about this idea of like, we really need to focus on core instruction and improving core instruction, like that PLC time, freeing up a teacher so that they can go observe another great teacher, like you don't get great by yourself in your classroom by yourself. And that takes having enough people to be able to cover or to be able to make sure that they can get that PLC time. So the work that you are doing on the hiring side matters for that. And it just makes me think about how important it is for us at the district level to keep expanding our subpool so that fewer people are having to do coverages and all of these things. Just feels really, really, really important. I had a like really specific question for Ms. Fournier about the online academy and appreciated just like the thoughtful way that you did sort of a strengths and weaknesses, since it's a brand new school. You had information in your presentation about like the failure rate of students, and I was curious like how that compares to the idea of proficiency on these tests and stuff? So like, is 25% failing means 25% not proficient? Because that's actually, that would be like a much smaller level of, like, that would mean many more students were proficient than elsewhere. So just wanted to understand the like failure versus proficiency.
So part of my thinking in framing my goals that way is that, you know, our partnership with Adventum is new, and so we don't know yet what that will mean, right? So we don't know yet what proficiency will look like with our students, because we are learning their curriculum along with them. And so, so my goals were different in that way in saying, you know, I don't have control over their curriculum. I don't have control over their teaching methods or grading policies. Now, I do have input, right? And I meet with them regularly and use this data to drive those conversations. So, but what I can control, right, and what I can look at concretely is how they are performing right now. And so, you know, setting those goals to say, you know, I can control what interventions we put in place, what supports we put in place, how I'm communicating with families and with Adventum. And so, you know, so really just focusing on the things that we do, you know, have control over. And again, to say, you know, unfortunately, we don't know what that means quite yet as far as proficiency. So being realistic with our goals.
Thank you.
Other board members?
Can I add one more thing about the online academy? I think another challenge in her selection of data, and she did a phenomenal job, is that many of her students did not test. And, and that's just a function of the students that elected to become a part of the online academy. And so our most important, you know, way to support them is to ensure that they are promoted, and that is. And that is a focus of her daily work with students and families. And so it, it really did seem like the most valid measure of student performance at this time.
And if I may just comment, Mrs. Smiley, on your statement around time and that, and that challenge. And thank you, Mr. Johnson, for bringing that up. It is indeed a challenge. Time for professional development, time for PLCs, time for planning. There's no end of, of challenges with regards to time. And so one of the things we are certainly going to be looking at as we develop next year's school calendar, which that work will begin in earnest very soon is really thinking about, you know, the, that aspect of time and how might we build in more time into the school calendar. So for example, we don't have any professional development days built into our school calendar. And we know that how important capacity building is. So we certainly will be taking that into consideration as we develop and present a calendar for the board to consider for next school year. So thank you for bringing that up.
Mr. Atherton, did you have your hand raised?
I did. Thank you. So I just wanted to start off by saying I really like how all of the schools started with the subgroup data. Just, you know, here's the issue. This is what we're looking at. These are the, you know, areas of focus. I, I really like the engaging community sections. Although I do have a couple of questions on that. So, so are family liaisons, is that how the view is how some of that will take place? It really didn't list the family liaisons as part of that, but I'm assuming that, is that the thinking around it?
I'm going to let principals answer and then I'm sure Ms. Stowe also can chime in. And I, I'm happy to answer as well.
I'll hop in and say that for us, it's going to be all hands on deck. You know, different families connect to schools in different ways and through different aspects. So for some families, it's through athletics. For some families, it's through academics. So however our family connects, we're going to start there and then try to continue to build that school home relationship and continue to build that community connection. So yes, we're going to use our liaisons, but we're also going to use everybody else in that building.
Excellent. And one of the, the other questions I had in that was mainly for the high school principals. So I guess a couple of years ago, we rolled out the app for Orange High and Cedar Ridge, and I didn't see it mentioned. Is that still going to be a communication avenue? Is it being utilized? Do we know the adoption rate of it?
And Mr. Atherton, I don't know in terms of the adoption rate of our app, but my new DLC is starting Friday and I am so excited. And that's going to be one of her projects, our website and the Orange High School app to get it, like, fully functional.
That's fantastic because I, I, I can tell you a lot of parents like the convenience of being able to see it. And, you know, also our families that just prefer texting over, over any of that. So I, I'm excited to hear that. Is that the same for Cedar Ridge or?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Yes, we use the app. We find more traction though with our weekly bulletins, Sunday notes, or this weekly and the midweek updates. We found that if we streamline our information, for those that really need to know the detail, we do that. The, the app we use for events that are timely, games, plays and so forth, just real quick.
Excellent. Thank you. The last question or, or thing I just wanted to highlight or, or thing that really stood out to me was AL Stand Back. I really liked the actions to assist with support of the strategy, especially bringing out Avid, right? Avid is such a great strategy and techniques and having that being taught across the, the teacher so they have these strategies to leverage. And I, I just wanted to highlight it as I thought that was a excellent way to, you know, bring that to the top level of some of the physically how you're going to do it. Thank y'all.
Other comments or questions from board members? Adam Chair? Yes. Let Bonnie speak. Ms. Hauser?
I just wanted to share, and I don't know if the principals have heard this, but we've gotten feedback from our Hispanic parents and the Family Success Alliance about, which not to be confused with our Family Relations Group or Family Liaison, but the family, they, they are telling us that especially our Hispanic parents and especially our low-income Hispanic parents are communicating primarily via text, that they don't use email, they don't use, even voicemail, not so great for them. And they also question, and this is really, I'm not sure it's directed at the schools, because I think everybody likes the tools you're using, but that they reminded us that many of the parents have a second grade literacy level. So to really be careful how we speak to them. And I'm just curious. So that's why I'm kind of interested in how many parents are actually getting, are actually receiving communications and then understanding it in a way to respond to them. And, and I just didn't know if that's something that's, is that even, it wasn't in any of the plans. And I'm just curious if that's something that you're concerned about or see or are worried about.
Good evening. If I could just add to, to that question, the family liaisons and the communications team have, have fully reviewed the strategic plan and we are very much mission critical. The bullseye graphic that was shared earlier. We are very much focused on students graduating on time and students reading at grade level. And we know that that doesn't just happen in third grade and 12th grade. And so I've had communications with principals about where, where do we need to focus our energy and time? And so, yes, part of our assessment with, with specifically with Hispanic families, okay, 26% are Hispanic. How many need to receive a message in Spanish because they're also offended if we spent, send a message in English and they, I mean, in Spanish and they speak English? And then we're also assessing, do they use WhatsApp? Do they prefer it in video? As, I don't know if you're aware, but we also not only translate our mess, our videos, but we interpret them. So it's, again, it's, it's the sound and not just having to read it. So we're assessing that now. I would predict you'd have an update by the end of November on exactly what that breakdown looks like and how our Hispanic families prefer to be communicated with.
So, so let me just, so that, thank you for that. I just wanted, just to re-clarify my question. My question is not that what we're saying, it's, is, are they hearing it? Are they getting it? And I just wonder if we have a way, and I just wanted to know from the principals, if they see that as a problem or are they pretty confident that all their schools are getting, are all their families are online with Power School or whatever tools they're using? And if that should, if, because each school should be measuring progress in, in making sure each parent gets, each family is getting material. So it, it's, it's just a question to, to say, how are we doing? Are we really reaching our parents? And I would love the principals, I welcome you to shut me down to say, it's not a problem for us. We've got it.
Ms. Stevens, did you have something that you wanted to say?
You can move on. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Don't let me miss you.
I'm sorry. Is there no, no feedback from the principals? They're not comfortable or uncomfortable? I, I was hoping that I, that someone might comment.
We, we had, we're, we're going to have some wait time. We're thinking about how to respond to.
Oh, okay, good. I just want to really know, are you comfortable? Or is there something that we need to, to look at?
It's a great question and it's one that needs to be asked. Are we reaching out to our Spanish-speaking families? We are communicating in Spanish and English. And especially with the most important documents. As far as having a metric to gauge whether or not they're getting it, I don't think we have that in place. But it's something definitely that we could look into. We do rely at the high school level, rely heavily on our students to translate for their families as an if, in a pinch. We do offer translation services if parents come to school. We have enough staff members that speak Spanish, we can support them. And we have parents that come in all the time.
We have another principal who's trying to weigh in, but they can't unmute. It's, Dr. Rockland is trying to unmute, but he's struggling.
Oh, he may need to be promoted to panelist. Can someone please confirm that they're on that?
And, and just to clarify, you know, we know it's especially a problem with Spanish parents, but I think it's also a problem with some of our very low-income families and maybe some others. So I, I, I don't know the extent of the problem. You know, I just know that not everybody's getting our messages.
And Ms. Hauser, oh, Dr. Rockland, are you on?
I, I'm on. Sorry, I was trying so hard. I was like, I promise, I wouldn't, you were shouting. I was like, I know, I know. All right. So Bonnie, just for you, like, I think we need, we are still not at a place where all of our families are involved. However, at my PTSO meetings, I have more people speaking Spanish than I do English that need translation. To me, that's huge. I'm used to having three people at the meeting trying to determine how to, how to help a school out. And to have this many families coming in is wonderful. We have some of our, our Spanish-speaking families tomorrow that are providing tamales to the staff, just to say, thanks for all the work you're doing. That to me, I don't know how to measure that in a survey. But that's, parents starting to get involved in schools that I haven't seen before. And, and it's, how do we keep pushing that? But you're right, like, how do we measure that better? How do we target that? We really are going to be working more, especially for myself come January, when, and I think a lot of schools are looking at, at re-looking at our visions and missions now that we're coming through COVID. Do we need to reanalyze where we're at? You will see a lot more groups getting active and involved with the schools and trying to get out to those communities so that we are ensuring that as our community has changed, so, so should our, our mission and vision. And hopefully that, that will come true. But I, I agree with you. There's not a good way to measure that currently on engagement, but I, it's more of a sense that I get overall.
And I'm sorry, let me just add one thing. So our current main communication system is mass notification. So I can tell you right now, print out data reports, how many messages went out, translated text, how many people hung up, voicemail answered. But the key data point we don't know, that is not analyzed by mass notification, is did they actually read it? And social media does that. It, it will sense that yes, this viewer stopped and actually read the message. They clicked the link. We don't know that. So we do have a technology platform, which is free, that we are implementing. But before we assess that, we are waiting till mid-November to ensure we have all the data correct, to ensure we're communicating with the right families. And that will be led at the district level by communications and shared via monthly reports with the principals. How many families never clicked the message, never opened it? The other piece, just let me, one more thing, data analytics. For the, this new system we're going to use, if, if we send out a message and it's, you must complete the free and reduced lunch form by September 30th. If the family doesn't open the email, we can have that message resent seven days later. If they don't click the link, we can have it sent again, but only to the families that don't click. So we've got to be a little smarter. I mean, frankly, with, with the platform we're using, but you know, during COVID, it, it doesn't make good sense to switch platforms because we're, we're just struggling to stay connected to our families. So I hope that helps. We're working on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Mackenzie, if I may just say one thing, I, I just feel compelled to say something here. I appreciated what Ms. Stowe just shared with Dr. Rockland, with Dr. Ramirez. Because I think that they are getting at the right things, that there are different ways to measure. I just would like us to be careful that we're not making these statements that actually could be frankly quite disrespectful to our Hispanic families. When we are saying that it may, it's because, and I, and I understand, Ms. Hauser, it may be because of what we're hearing that our parents are at second grade reading level. I, I don't, I just want to be very careful, but that's not the message we're sending. So I think there are many ways that we can, you know, make sure that we're reaching our families and, and see that there are many ways of how we may not be reaching our families. So I just, I didn't want any, and I know you didn't mean it that way, Ms. Hauser. I just community to think that.
Let's be clear that I was recounting feedback that we've received multiple times from them. And, and honestly, I, we get comparable feedback from highly educated parents who say, this stuff's too complicated for us to, you know, so, so I think, you know, there's this, there's a question about, you know, making it easier to follow. So, so the goal is not to be disparaging. I think that the goal is, is to, that people are trying to give us candid feedback about what's going on. And again, my goal is, I am so impressed with what our schools are doing and what the district is doing. It's all great. I just wonder if there's a way that we could, I, I worry about the people that we're not reaching. And, and, and I worry about, we do a lot of surveys and we know there's biases in the survey. So we get answers that are not really representative of our school populations. So all of that concerns me because there's bias in response. Sometimes I'll just, some people don't care and some people just didn't get it, didn't receive it to begin with. And I just wish there was a way for us to monitor our progress at getting better at this, because I think we are. That's all I'm asking.
And please know, I meant no disrespect, and I, because I knew that that's not what you were saying about our family. I didn't want who, in the public that we're hearing to think that, because I know that's not what you were saying. And I don't believe that you think that. And I knew that you were providing feedback. I just wanted to, yeah, because I, I knew that that's not what you were saying. Thank you.
Ms. Stevens?
I'd like to make a motion to extend, please, till 10:30.
And to be clear, that includes our, the second part of our closed session. So we're going to need to be zippy to wrap this up and do our policies as well.
Second?
Who was the second?
Sarah.
It was me.
I heard Ms. Doyle first. Sorry, it doesn't matter. Motion from Ms. Stevens, second from Ms. Doyle, Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Okay, let's wrap this up by 10:30. Are there any closing remarks or thoughts to our secondary principals? Okay. Well, thank you all so very much for being here. We are grateful. Y'all have a great night.
So, Mrs. Mackenzie, if I could just jump in here, I know that time is of the essence, but I do want to say that as we continue to work through our plans and strengthen and fine tune measures, my goal, our goal is 100%. We, we're not writing off any children. We're not going to accept or sleep at night and think we've been successful until one, we have 100% graduation rate, 100% literacy proficiency rates, 100% math proficiency rates. The challenges are huge. We know that we have longstanding persistent gaps in achievement. COVID certainly did not help, but certainly having a district strategic plan and school improvement plans is, is the starting place. And I'm proud of the work of our principals and schools and remain encouraged about the work we'll begin in earnest this year to improve outcomes for, for all of our students. So I appreciate everyone's input tonight and feedback. Greatly appreciated. And thank you again to our principals and Dr. Doyle for her leadership and helping to get us where we are with regards to school improvement plans. Stay tuned for more to come.
Absolutely. Thank you. And Dr. Doyle, really, it says so much that you're on vacation in here tonight. And thank you so much. With that, is there a motion to approve our school improvement plans?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Ms. Hauser, second from Mr. Atherton, Ms. Doyle? A motion from Ms. Howser, second from Mr. Atherton, Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you everyone so much. We will now move on to our final portion of the meeting and that is our policy updates.
Thank you, uh, Chair McKenzie. And so, um, Ms. Hatcher, uh, we're Chief of Human Capital and I believe Mr. Aberley, uh, Deputy Superintendent for Operations will, uh, lead this discussion.
Good evening again. Um, I am coming before you to, um, discuss Policy 7335, social media. Um, the policy committee met on October 15th at such time. Um, this policy was discussed with some revisions. Um, the recommended revisions were to the employee use of social media, uh, to reflect district, um, expectations. So tonight, um, um, the superintendent's recommending approval, um, by the po, by the Board of Policy 7335 and to waive the waiving of the second reading of this policy.
Should we, does the board have any questions about this? And do we want to vote on these individually or collectively at the end? Mr. Atherton?
Uh, I had a question, but I, uh, I don't have a problem voting one or multiple, whatever works.
Okay. But why don't you ask your question and then we can ask.
Sure. So it, it appears that the only change to the social media is hateful and then parentheses, all such as, if you will. The question I have is beyond the items there, which fully support, who determines hateful? You know, is mean hateful as well? Is it, you know, I, I'm worried about such an open-ended word on there. Is there, you know, who, who determines what mean is?
I think it has to do with protected classes of people, but I'll let Eva really respond to that.
My interpretation was, I mean, the examples are supposed to indicate that it is related to hate, as, as the chair said, as related to prejudice, um, and discrimination. But in a something more forceful than, you know, discriminatory. Um, I don't have an objection to another word if you have a suggestion, but that was the, that was the policy committee's intent, as I understood it was, as, as the examples.
Yeah, I like prejudiced. I like, I like several of the words you said, because hateful to me is so open-ended. Um, that I don't want us to get a flood of, this was hateful and it's way out of context or it's, you know, I, I fully support everything listed there. And I think prejudice is a much broader item than just the ones listed as well. But I, I, I'll step back for other comments around this.
Yeah. I mean, my, my concern with prejudice is really that in order for an employee to cross the line of this policy, it needs to be, I mean, if you look at the other list of language here, profane, pornographic, obscene, indecent, um, beyond just expressing disapproval of something, um, but crossing a line into what I think of as, as hateful, um, more of a virulent, you know, racism or something like that. But I, you know, I understand that the word can have different interpretations. As far as your question of who says, um, it's generally human capital in consultation with my office.
Ms. Howser?
Yeah, I just wanna, I actually prefer, like the word discriminatory. And so, you know, especially, um, because it, I believe it would cover more than protected classes, you know, but, but, and then it continues sexually, sexually offensive. So it's, um, you know, the, the whole phrase, yeah, ha- hateful, you know, we're, we live in such a charged world. And certainly we all, we don't want racism, transphobic, misogynistic, homophobic, um, anti-Semitic or anti-anything, right? But I, I can't imagine we can have a complete list. Um, but discriminatory is a word that, that, um, it just, you know, I, I, I would prefer a language that's more descriptive and, and, um, and more persistent and, and socially.
So I, I will just give my two cents that I think mild language can be discriminatory and mild language should not be outlawed. We, we heard from a lot of people that they felt the board was discriminating against athletes at different times. And that is not something that, I mean, we are balancing people's First Amendment rights here. So I think we need a word that indicates something that crosses the line beyond just expressing an opinion. Um, and to me hateful is stronger than discriminatory. I, I guess I'm hearing that it doesn't strike others the same way, but
I think that
that's my concern about the word discriminatory is that it is pretty broadly interpreted these days.
Fear is that hateful is kind of extremely interpreted in ways and, um, and so it, it could mean, you know, to, to someone, to an extremist hateful, to, to an extremist, something that's hateful might be discre, just discriminatory to someone who's not so extreme. So I, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. And what are we trying to do with our employees? We don't want them to use, if you're an employee of Orange County Schools, I don't think we want them to be using discriminatory um, language that, um, social media, right? I mean,
Well, no, we don't want them to, but there is a limit to what we can reasonably regulate.
Ms. Doyle?
I just, I, I want to say that I'm fine with the, the
Um, we're not here, uh, we're not hearing you, Ms. Doyle. Maybe you can cut your video.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
Okay. I was just going to say, I think that definition that, you know, not just like saying, I hate this or I don't like that.
Ms. Doyle, we're having, we're having trouble hearing you. Ms. Doyle?
I'm just gonna, I'll send you my comments Hillary, but I think it's fine to go ahead.
Okay, we did hear that. Thank you. Ms. Smiley?
I'll just say that I think, um, that Eva's point made sense to me in terms of preferring this language over discriminatory, um, given that balance.
I agree, uh, with Sarah. And also Sarah, I think you're the one who, um, brought this forward and you said you lifted it from, uh, another larger school district and they included hatred. Is that correct?
I can't remember what the original, yeah, Charlotte Mecklenburg, um, had just passed a policy that I saw this language in there, but, um, we massaged it a little bit in the committee, so I can't remember precisely the word hateful was in their version, but yeah.
It was. And, and I do agree with, uh, what you said and what, uh, Carrie said as well. I, I'd like it there. But you know, if, I don't want this discussion to hold the 7335 policy back. So if we need to put both words in there, we can do that.
Well, I think I don't know if Eva wants us to use discriminatory in the policy. It sounds like that is probably not the best choice from a legal standpoint. So.
Oh, well, we want to listen to her then. So we'll leave, I'll vote to leave it at this.
I mean, I guess it sounds like we might need to vote on these as separate items. I'm not
Is it?
No. I guess I'll just ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a, a different suggestion if, if, and that's the, the phrase IE which suggests that this is an inclusive list as opposed to EG, which would be, for example, because it's not an inclusive list.
I have no objection to that. Okay.
I like that too. I think that helps show that it's a larger scope.
So I move that we approve this with that proposed change and waive second reading.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I vote yes. Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Got it. Ms. Howser?
Yes.
Okay, Policy 7335 passes. Thank you, everyone. Next, we will talk about the revision for Policy 4120 admission to Orange County Schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, uh, two revisions to Policy 4120. The first is in Section 8. With provisions for the enrollment of foreign and international exchange students on a J1 visa. This typically follows two types of programs, one where they would individually request, um, admission to Orange County Schools through a certified accredited agency, or two in cases where we would have a mutual exchange agreement with a foreign or international school. For example, we may send, you know, four students this semester abroad and they would send four students to us. That would be a, a mutual program. In our previous version of the policy, it was not clear in reference to, um, the types of programs and which students may enroll, but we also wanted to include visa requirements. And with this policy is a substantive change to include 4120, uh, for the regulations and procedures which would guide the changes within policy. This is a local decision and we are recommending that the board waive second reading and adopt this on first reading as we, um, have had, um, requests for foreign and international exchange students to enroll. We've also clarified within the policy language, terms and conditions for which tuition would be applied in these cases. That's the first, um, change to 4120. I'll pause there and then I'll mention the second one, which goes into the third policy we have before you.
Any questions? I think you can keep going, Mr. Aberley.
So the second change to 4120, uh, within our admission regulations was, uh, in reference to employees that live out of district, but, um, come into our district, provide services to our students and families who also may have students that are enrolled in our school district as well that they bring with them. Uh, several years ago, you may recall, we changed policy to allow them to bring their, um, children with them into the district tuition-free. We've had requests this year, um, obviously due to some changes in bell times, but also due to, um, just how, um, campuses are operating and daycares are operating, especially with COVID restrictions and requirements, um, just as we experienced. It just takes longer to, to do those processes in the morning. And staff members having difficulties with students, um, due to their reporting requirements. And we've had requests to transport students of out-of-district employees. And what we would ask is, in policy, um, that the superintendent or the deputy superintendent, um, be allowed to provide these services. Um, again, following all the provisions and policies, um, these requests would be, uh, feasible. We would utilize existing routes, must not require additional buses extending route times for assigned students, additional drivers or cost to the district to provide these services. An example of that would be, I'm a, I'm a teacher at a school. Um, my student, my child goes to school where I work. At the end of the day, there's a bus that we have already at the school that's taking children from the school to an after-school club or camp. And my child would then be eligible to ride that bus, just like any other child assigned to the school where that route is already established and there's seat and space available. So that would be the type of review we would look at in these cases. In Policy 6355, we carry the same language only over, but we also qualified within the policy, just some, uh, language surrounding eligibility in general for school bus routes. Again, um, students, um, on transfer are not provided transportation per the terms and agreements for student transfers within district, but we also clarified, um, the county lines and other ways that individuals, um, might have thought based on the way the policy was written, they would be eligible for transportation. We're not aware of any cases that this has, uh, caused implications to, but did want to clarify why we were tweaking policy. The language on eligibility as we reviewed, um, with the requests from staff. And that's Policy 6355. You're welcome.
Any questions? Mr. Atherton?
So, one question I have is, on this policy about space and route and availability, if they submit at the beginning of the school year, they, it should be fine, but like this year, we added 900 kids and all this. So I assume that this doesn't have to do with, you know, timing or is timing, right? Because if they, they submit early, they're going to be included. There's, there's space that's available. But if they submitted when the 900 came in, they may be a tipping point. I, I know, given a corner case, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'll try to dive into the corner with you here. So, um, first of all, I hope we're not adding 900 students with the processes and procedures we're going to put in place by next school year, um, to help families, um, sign up and, and enroll in, in bus services. This year was just unusual with so many changes and individuals coming back for services without having bus service last year, or individuals that normally would have had bus services who opted to, um, for fear or concerns or not waiting to hear what the COVID restrictions and procedures were going to be, didn't want to put children on school buses. And so I do think this year was an anomaly. So, um, hopefully that will not occur again next year. That's our plans. Um, and we'll, we'll certainly be working towards that. As far as, um, the route timing, we have not gone back. And once we've authorized an action under policy with the board like this, we've not gone back and say, oops, this week, you know, you're out of eligibility, you're back in eligibility. We really look at eligibility at that point in time and move forward from there. Now, we would deny additional requests or, or new requests that come in. But I don't anticipate, based on the practice and how we've implemented policies, that we have, um, removed students once authorization has been given. And that's certainly, you know, up to the board to say, you know, reviewed quarterly or reviewed, you know, semi-annually, um, you know, for eligibility. If you don't want to say, you know, it's for this school year, you know, certainly you could say to, you know, we could put in policy, but our thoughts were, there's so few requests. Um, if it's feasible, it'll, it'll be feasible. We'll make it work.
That's great to hear. And I especially love hearing about the new process to, to help manage that at the beginning. So thank you so much. You're welcome.
Is there a motion to approve this policy?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Ms. Stevens, a second from Mr. Atherton, Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Oh, okay. Did, we didn't talk about the waiver of second reading. Um, I guess we
We have a motion to waive the second reading on all three policies.
Do that? Well, this, the, the second two, we already did the first one.
Well, let's just try to finish this vote and then we can ask Eva if we can.
I think it's once started the vote, go ahead and finish the vote.
Okay, sorry y'all. Um, Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Um, why don't we just go ahead and do another quick motion for waiver of second reading?
All right, Madam Chair, I move that we waive second reading on Policy 4120 and 6322.
Second? Second from Ms. Doyle. Okay, Ms. Howser?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Okay, we have approved the second readings. And now we just have our final policy to discuss. Is policy sixty three twenty two, student assignment to buses.
So again, the, the changes with sixty three twenty two fall in line with the changes to forty one twenty, allowing us to make the additional recommendations where feasible for eligibility of out of district families. And then we just clarify the application process and eligibility for buses.
Right, and, okay, and, um, this affects also teachers in the district, right?
They're already eli, if they're in, if they live in district, they're already eligible and we already provide.
All right, and this is out of district teachers. Okay, I'm sorry, y'all. I just had a moment. Okay.
And please waive second reading of this policy as well, so they're both aligned.
Okey dokey. So.
Now, can we approve this last policy and waive second reading?
Second. Motion from Ms. Stevens, second from Ms. Smiley. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens? Okay, all, um, policies are approved with waiver of second reading. Thank you, everyone. And I believe that that ends our open session business unless you have anything else, Dr. Felder. Okay, then I will ask for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three 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 one eight, that one one A one A three and A six to consult with the attorney as needed to preserve the attorney's right of privilege to consider confidential personnel matters and to prevent the disclosure of personnel information that's privileged under North Carolina General Statute one one five C through three one nine and student information that is confidential under FERPA and to plan conduct for here reports concerning investigations of alleged criminal misconduct and to formulate plans by the local Board of Education relating to emergency response of incidents of school violence or to formulate and adopt the school safety components of school improvement plans by a local Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Smiley and a second from Ms. Stevens. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, I will, we'll leave this meeting and I will reopen the closed session room. Thanks, everyone.
All right.